I now call order the community redevelopment agency meeting of the city of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March 18th, 2014 at 6:30. Roll call.
Chair Archie.
Here.
Vice Chair Slattery.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Tarepani.
Here.
Commissioner Banther is absent and excused.
The first item we have is number one, approve CRA meeting minutes, that's October 15th, November 19th, and December 17th.
Move approval. Second?
Any public comments on these items? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Tarepani.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Slattery.
Yes.
Chair Archie.
Yes. Item number two is presentation, CRA annual report. Ms. Lemmons.
Thank you. Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager. It's time again for the annual report for our CRA. This is a statutory requirement of all communities that have a CRA to report other activities that happened within the CRA during the preceding fiscal year and to provide financial information as well. Our current report details activities from October 1st of 2012 through September 30th of 2013. You've got the report with you, and as you can see, we have accomplished a tremendous amount. Last year, we had decided to use the report as a marketing tool as well, and so we've done a nice professional report. We included a lot of pictures and opportunities to showcase our businesses, some of which I see here today. And this has really proven to be a useful tool for me as I'm working with attracting businesses from throughout the region and outside of the area. And I know Twisty Treat especially liked the fact that we were a small town. They weren't real familiar with us, but this was one thing I had used, and they liked our downtown atmosphere and that we had that small-town feel, so we're going to continue to do this as well. What I'd like to do tonight, instead of going through the report, we did a survey this past year from September to fall of the CRA businesses. So I'd like to focus the PowerPoint to give you the results of the survey and some recommendations. And then what I'd like to do with the report is just go through from page three, just kind of go through the highlights, what's been accomplished throughout that. We had 28 new businesses this year that opened within the CRA. That's outstanding. Again, they're all listed in the report, highlighting the pictures, and not only downtown businesses, but we had a lot open on North and South Pinellas and in the Southern Gateway area as well. We're continuing the facade grant program. We've had 13 applications in the three years that we've had the program. Three of them came in this, six of them, I'm sorry, came in this past year. So we've really been stepping up our efforts to promote that program. And as you can see in the report, there's tremendous results from the before-and-after photos. We completed the Tarpon Avenue streetscaping and the Tarpon-Safford intersection improvements this past year. We completed the signage and wayfinding sign plan. Those are the blue wayfinding signs. The last of those were installed on North and South Pinellas this past year, and the reason that those were delayed a little bit was because of having to work with the state to get approval for that. Hibiscus Street was one of our big accomplishments. We revitalized that in our historic downtown. The result was four new businesses. It was a tremendous partnership among the property owner, the business owners, the city, and the CRA facade grant. Without that grant, I don't believe that the project would have happened. There's now a revitalized building, again, four new businesses. And anyone who hasn't been to Hibiscus lately really needs to go down there. And I know some of the businesses there joke about not being an alley anymore. You know, Hibiscus is no longer an alley, we're a street, and we're proud of that. So they've grown up to be a street. And again, I encourage people to go down and visit the new businesses on Hibiscus. We've negotiated a lease-purchase agreement for a new building on downtown Tarpon Avenue. It'll be on the main block of East Tarpon. Hopefully, it will be a first new building in our downtown in a long time. The project calls for first-floor retail and restaurant use, and second floor would be apartments. We've expanded our festivals and events. We've held a second annual Snowplace and made that bigger and better. We started an Oktoberfest this year. This is all through the Merchants Association. We've got new business owners with a lot of creativity and energy, and they're really making a difference. There are now 71 members of the Merchants Association, and it's no longer being called the downtown or the docks. The members are really evenly split between the two, but we've also got a lot of new members along Pinellas and in the Southern Gateway section. So we're calling it the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association as a unifying motif for the city, and I think that's a real positive step. We've got a new president this year, David Gouchman, and outgoing president is Reyes Saber, who did a great job for us. And then finally, the Santos Isle Senior Housing Project is complete. That was completed the end of this year, and within two weeks, the place was full, completely leased, 55 senior housing units. And then finally, the North Safford Recreation Corridor, which was the Pinellas Trail Improvements, the dog park, and the fitness park. Those were all completed this year. Had a big grand opening in October with dog run and dog walks and the fitness and a zombie run, and it was a great day for everybody. So that's just a brief highlight of what's been accomplished. We expect a lot more work this coming year and a lot more progress in the CRA. So now what I'd like to do is just to focus on the survey results. We did this in summer and fall of last year. We surveyed the downtown business property owners and business owners, really to assess their needs, to look at what the city is currently incentivizing and providing for them, and then identify some opportunities for improvement. This is the CRA. It runs from Dodecanese, a little bit farther than Dodecanese on the north, to Miras on the south, incorporates the downtown area. It's 227 acres and 162 commercial properties. And for the purpose of the survey, we just looked at the commercial properties, and we didn't look at the residential. Response rate, again, we distributed 162 surveys. We had 38 responses, which was a 23 percent response rate. I'm not a statistician, but typically 10 percent and above is considered a pretty good reliable rate. And then who responded? About 63 percent were services, 26 percent were retail businesses. And then if you look at the number of years in business, almost 70 percent of the respondents have been in business 10 years or more, so they were some longtime business owners. And then the findings. The findings really fell, as I was going through them, into three different categories. Aiding tourism, and those were things that the business and property owners felt were significant to attracting tourists to the area. City governance, and those were things like permitting, development review, and code enforcement, things that they felt they wanted our attention paid more to. And then city-supported businesses, which are things that the city could do to help them succeed. And under the significant results, again, beautification was really the main universally-accepted, widely-enjoyed activity that the city has done. They really appreciated the beautification efforts that have been done along the trail and downtown. The lighting, lighting really focused on a couple of things. Some of the respondents from the downtown would like to see lights on the downtown trees, like you see in some cities. And other responses were about the lights on the globes. Some were kind of yellow, some looked glass, some looked plastic, and if the city could do something to turn those out over the years so they would be more uniform. And then streets and sidewalks really focused on maintenance and potholes and issues like that. City governance, half of the people who responded would like to see a permitting and development review process expedited. Felt that sometimes it was a cumbersome effort, and there might be some things that we could do to help our businesses get open a little bit sooner. Storm drainage, that kind of revolved around standing water during rains, and then enforcing the zoning code. There's a perception among the respondents that the city does not uniformly enforce the zoning codes, which is a code enforcement issue. And then supported businesses. There were almost a quarter of the people who didn't know they were in a CRA, and those were mainly from outside of the downtown. Believe me, everybody downtown knows they're in a CRA. And about half would consider having a facade grant, or wanted to increase the funding or see the program maintained. Under aiding tourism, again, the beautification was the biggest universally-accepted, and they'd like to see more of it. But other comments that came up incorporated the Welcome Center, the Train Depot. They'd like to see the hours of operation longer. And I know since this, we do have a new employee now at the Train Depot, so the hours are now extended. They're Wednesday through Saturday, noon to 3:00, I believe. But with that, I know a lot of the people would like to see them open on Sundays or daily, if it could be. Signage for visitors where businesses are located. Some of the respondents were asking for signs that would be located on Tarpon Avenue on Hibiscus, Ring, Safford, showing that there are more shops on the perpendicular streets, especially now that Hibiscus has some new stores that haven't been there in about a decade, to try to show motorists and pedestrians that there are additional shops not on the main drag. The wayfinding signs, they'd like to see those updated. I believe they were installed about three years ago. Some of the signs in the downtown area have maps on them that show, that list all of the businesses and show where they are. Those haven't been updated, and since 2011, there's been quite a bit of changeover in businesses. So that's something that we need to look at, is removing those maps. The signs themselves, we don't have to change, but there are maps that we can move out. And then there's brochure boxes on there that haven't been filled, so that's something that we'll talk to them about. Welcome sign at the east end of Tarpon Avenue, that was a comment from a couple people. There's a right-of-way area near Walmart where Tarpon Avenue narrows down to one lane as you're going west, and the idea there is to put in some landscaping and maybe a monument sign with electronic reader board that you could have a nice entry feature. Now with Keystone Road being opened, to welcome people into the city, and then you could possibly not have that portable orange sign. It would look a little bit nicer. Other comments were on events downtown, maybe closing Tarpon Avenue on Saturdays or starting some second Saturday events, creating a gathering place downtown. There were a couple comments that there's really no park downtown, that the Miras parking lot had once been a park. Would like to see some kind of green space where people could congregate. And then there were a couple comments on closing the alley between Tarpon Tavern and Temple Goddess Yoga to create some, a green space, an outdoor area. I'm sure many of you have been down the alley that runs from Hibiscus to Safford, and as it gets past the Orange Street parking lot, it narrows two or three feet, and it's very tight. You can see marks from the cars on the buildings on each side, and as you go out, you actually have to get your car almost onto the sidewalk before you can look north and south to see where you are. And I know before the improvements were on the trail, cars used to go straight across and then north on Safford Avenue. So that's an idea that came from some of the local businesses to possibly close that portion of the alleyway off. Under city governance, half of the respondents would like to see an expedited development review process. One of the, some of the comments were, again, the zoning and code enforcement issue, and that, again, surfaced on the perception that the city is inconsistent with how we enforce our zoning codes, that some people get letters and some don't, and, you know, wondering how we, if there could be a more uniform way of using our code enforcement efforts. Friendly environment, there were several comments from people who had been through, coming forward to boards for applications of various types, that they didn't have a real friendly experience or a more negative experience, and one person said it felt like it was more of an inquisition. So looking at how we treat people who come before the boards for applications is something we need to look at. And then administrative approvals of applications. There were several comments about being able to administratively approve certain types of applications if they would meet certain zoning codes. And then 39 percent of respondents talked about increased policing. This is really centered around homeless presence in the downtown area, and since this, Officer Ulrich has been to several of our Merchants Association meetings and talking with the business owners. Chief Cochen has helped us, and with their input, we've developed a flyer that we use to, for the downtown businesses, to talk about what to do if you have, you know, homeless gathering in your place, or if they're creating a problem for your customers. And so that has really helped tremendously. Under city governance, I put this in here because I was working on another project, and I was looking at the 2001 Downtown Development Plan. That was the plan that was done to create the CRA back in 2001, and I saw some of the very same findings. The consultant who did the report had done an extensive survey of the area, and I just found it interesting that 13 years ago, some of these same comments were made about flexibility in the code, expediting the permitting process, and the code enforcement practices. Some additional comments, improvements to sewer and stormwater, again, the pools of water. Some building owners, some of our older historic properties are not kept up maybe in the way that they could be, and adjacent property owners are concerned about property values and how to work with private owners to keep up their buildings. City access via Miras Boulevard, US 19, that came up several times, especially with some of the respondents from the Southern Gateway area. And that's going to be even more important now with Wynn Dixie will be leaving in May. They're going to be moving over to the Sweet Bay Plaza. We have, we've entertained several developments for the two corners of Alt 19 and Miras in the past couple of years, but that extension is in the way. So we really need to focus on getting that done, and that's been suggested by some of the business owners as well. And then the safety upgrades, they appreciate the upgrades that were done to the Tarpon-Safford intersection, but there still appears to be confusion to motorists and trail users by some of the respondents. City support to businesses, again, there were 20 percent who didn't know they were in a CRA. A majority would like to know more about the facade grant and would consider applying. Then there were some comments about the facade grant, that they'd like to see the dollar amount increased, and obviously, that would depend on funding that we have. Parking repaving came up several times. We don't include parking repaving in the, in the facade grant criteria. It's something that I think we would like to consider, especially with some of the older properties that have front parking, that it could help to beautify the area. And then funding for interior renovations. So based on the input, we've come up with some recommendations I just wanted to briefly touch on, again, with the facade grant program. It started with a level of 150. We are currently at a balance of 50,000, so that's going to run out soon. Again, the recommendation to increase it, again, I, you know, we'll be working through the budget this year, and I don't know that that's a reality, but something just to keep in mind. More interest in the loan program, one thing that we could do is to try to attract more interest in the loan program. Loaning the funds and having a low-interest loan would help to replenish it, would kind of create a revolving, revolving fund. Adding additional criteria, perhaps adding parking lot maintenance where it would be applicable, and then creating an interior grant program. We really have an opportunity now, especially in downtown, we've got a building in foreclosure that's recently had an offer accepted on it, the Miras Building at 106 East Tarpon. The small building that used to be a dry cleaners is now being renovated completely. And then we'll have the new building on the Forbes property that's hopefully going to be going up this year. So we've got an opportunity to target restaurant attraction. When you see great downtowns, you see a lot of mix of good restaurants. That brings people daytime and nighttime and help develop our foot traffic. So to the extent that we could offer a program that would target renovating a retail building into a restaurant use, you know, if the building owner may or may not be willing to participate in helping the tenant with that, we could provide some type of grant that would help, and maybe it would be the difference between them choosing us or choosing another city. And then streamlining the development review and permitting process, one way we could do that, of a recommendation, would be to allow for applications for site plans that are permitted by right in the zoning district to be reviewed, as we do now for compliance through staff and through the TRC with all the codes. If all the codes are met, we could approve them administratively. And obviously, if anything was found to be noncompliant, it would go through the traditional process. Doing that could decrease the review period from three months to one month, and then reports could be provided to the board and the public on any plans that were permitted that way. I did have a, I've had developers ask me about our processes, and one just recently, and he had said, you know, "We're not asking for anything. We're not doing any rezoning. We're not, you know, asking for variance. We don't need to vacate anything. How can we have to go through this process? We don't do this in some other cities." And, "Well, that's what our process is." So, you know, we get compared to other cities. Secondly, we could consider providing for administrative approval of conditional uses for liquor licenses. Again, we would review those administratively as we do now. If they're in compliance with all the codes, we could approve a license administratively. That would review the period from, to two weeks from two months right now. One example of this, last night at the Planning and Zoning Board, there was a application for a, to COP license for Athens, on Athens Street, and it had previously been several different restaurants. They had a liquor license several times. You know, it's surrounded by other places that have liquor licenses, and yet it still had to go through this formal process. And it took a month to get to P&amp;Z last night. It's going to take another month to go, to come to you all for approval. If we could do administrative approvals, as long as they meet the code, they could have had their license by now. As time is money, it helps to help our businesses open as quickly as we can. And again, the economy's getting better, and we are doing some things that other cities are not doing. And so we could, we're being compared with other cities, and we're, you know, things that we could do to help our businesses who want to come here. Just summary again, these are things that I already touched on that were all respondents. The next steps, just like to share the results with various departments that were affected by these and bring back some recommendations for you to consider for some new policies and some new programs that we may be able to help our businesses in the coming year. And then finally, I just, I would just like to say, and this isn't really CRA-related, but we have had an extraordinary week this week. In a matter of seven days, we had a referendum pass with a 95 percent approval rate for an old nursing home, and then just last night, the Planning and Zoning Board had a unanimous approval on a new development at the Days Inn property. So those were two decades-long, highly-visible properties, the old nursing home and the Days Inn IHOP building that now have some new life and may be coming back in the property tax rolls. Between the two of them, they could generate 140 full-time jobs, provide $75,000 in property tax revenues to our city, 300 to 400 temporary construction jobs, which are people who'll be coming here every month, have to shop and work and get gas and do all of those things that people need to do. So I, I think it's been remarkable, what's been accomplished. I think everybody should be really excited about what we've done so far and where we're going forward in the future. And I just want to thank, I want to thank the residents for their approval of the referendum, and I want to thank the Board of Commissioners and the CRA Board for all of your support for the work that, you know, we've all been able to accomplish together the past couple of years. And with that, I have an end.
Well, first, I just want to thank you for a thorough reporting. It's good to know that we're headed in the right direction. Hopefully, we'll see the fruition of some of the recommendations once they're vetted. We look at that. I know we've been talking about permitting, and maybe some things, online permitting can be looked at too, to see what we can do as far as expediting that. But thank you for that report. Commissioner Lawson.
Commissioner Tarepani. Thank you. Ms. Lemmons, I want to thank you for the report as well. It's always nice to see that the CRA is moving in the right direction. I'm pleased to see that you have this new material to go out and try and market to new people, new businesses and development. I think the materials look nice. In terms of the facade grant, I think we should definitely look towards, when the budget time comes to, depending on where the $50,000 that's left in the program, where that lies, we should try and maybe put some more money into that program. Additionally, I think we should possibly look to expand the target area, maybe outside of the CRA, and I think that's something we can talk about. As far as the green space in the downtown goes, I'd just like to encourage everyone, and maybe you could encourage them as well, who would like to see the green space in the downtown to visit Craig Park. It's a mere, it's a mere one block from the Miras parking lot. So I kind of view that as our green space for the downtown, because it is in the downtown. And as far as the Tarpon Avenue and Safford Avenue intersections go, my question is, and you don't have to give me an answer right now, but I know when we did some of those improvements, we had some things that were supposed to come back. One was the railroad arm that we were going to try and put at that intersection and also use for some form of a media or marketing tool, not necessarily with the, I don't know, banners and whatnot, not with the images that go across the screen. I can't remember what that's called, but if you could look into that, I'd be appreciative. Thanks for your report.
Any public comments on this item?
Good evening. Anita Prost, 901 Bay Shore Drive. This is a very interesting report, but two things stuck in my brain. Think. If we vacate an alley that's been there for years, there is a purpose for an alley. Vacating a portion of that alley can be very dangerous. I remember when the trail was going through, a previous police chief here said, "We cannot close alleys. They're very important." The alley being spoken about will enhance two businesses at the end. That alley was very important for safety, health, and welfare of the community. You close it, you're blocking off. And I remember the police department came out very strong at that time not to close the alley. The second thing is, we have to be very careful of eliminating steps in the process here in the city, because it can come back to bite us in the back. Let's be very cautious of any steps that you eliminate in developments, programs coming in the city. There is a purpose for it. It's protection for our community and its citizens, and that protection is very dear to us, especially as we're growing more and more crimes coming in, and we're growing very fast. So I'll caution you on those two parts. The alley closing and eliminating steps in the process to get your license or getting approval for any development. Thank you.
If there are no other public comments, then we will adjourn the CRA meeting at 6:58. And I now call order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March 18th, 2014, at 6:59. Roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Tarepani.
Here.
Commissioner Banther is absent and excused.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Melanie Kidd, a signature health care. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Tonight, oh God, we come before you, thanking you for this beautiful day that you have carved out for us. We thank you today for the blessings of life. We also remember our leaders, both leaders, both nationally and internationally, that you will give them strength and discernment. And we ask those same elements for our leaders here in Tarpon Springs. May your providential care be with all, and may you flourish that which needs to flourish, and may you slow down those things that need to be slowed down. Make us swift to act, but patient on you, and grace and peace to all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. We will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. Please come forward, state your name, address for the record.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. After nine months of speaking to the citizens of Tarpon Springs, I heard a consistent theme from many people that they would love to come here and participate on various items, but they oftentimes only found out about those items after the meeting was over. And my suggestion to them, and my suggestion to you tonight, is to move the backup material, which you only get on Friday before the Tuesday meeting, to give yourself two weeks. Post the backup material two weeks so that everyone in town gets to see the agenda, and has two weeks to discuss it with their neighbors, to review it. I mean, this will make your lives easier. I know Friday night, you got to go home after getting this material, and then you got to review it over the weekend. The consent agenda is loaded with material, chock full. This is just one item, right here. It's a lot of paper, 40 pieces of paper, right here, for one item. It took me a long time to read all of that. I suspect the people in the audience would like to have that opportunity to read stuff that interests them. So, two weeks would give them that opportunity, and would give you the opportunity to review this material more. I've spoken to commissioners and council members from St. Petersburg to Oldsmar to Clearwater, and they were all puzzled about it too. You know, why is it this last minute? And then, of course, the argument will be, well, the staff, staff already is struggling to get it in time. No, this gives them more time. You do it incrementally, and you push it off. If you can't get it ready, you know, to have it for this meeting, then you got to put it off for another one. But a two-week minimum. I've also spoken to two statehouse representatives about this, because I think this needs to be fixed statewide. It's a sunshine law issue. So, my hope is that we can do it here without the state having to force it upon us. And it would be fantastic for all the other cities to see that we're doing it right. And then you'll have a more full audience like this, instead of the three or four people that were here the last one. So, I know by me bringing this to you tonight, it's not going to happen tonight. One of the commissioners sitting here is going to have to ask Mark to put it on the agenda to be discussed, and then you all can vote on it, whether you want it that way or not. Do you want to have two weeks to review the material, or do you just want to have a couple of days? You can make this change. Put it on the agenda. Make it happen. And that will give sunshine, sunlight on every single one of these items, and everybody will have a chance to review this stuff. That's what we need for our community to be strong. It's no big hurry on some of these things. And, you know, you've got two weeks from now to the next meeting. But that agenda will only appear on the Friday before that next meeting. It doesn't make any sense. It'll make life easier for the staff. It'll make life easier for the commissioners and for the city. Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Archie and Board of Commissioners. Athena Sardulis, 634 East Orange Street, Tarpon Springs, and I own Tarpon Sponge Incorporated. I am here once again to oppose the Sponge Docks Improvement Project. This ill-conceived plan diminishes the sponge industry and the commercial waterfront, the very lifeblood of our economy. I strongly urge you to reconsider this plan. Thank you for your attention.
Hello, everybody. My name is Annie Samarcos. My address is 32 West Tarpon Avenue concerning the Sponge Docks issue. I own and operate the 1910 Inn. I have been in business for two complete tourist seasons. My inn has been extremely busy, just as the Chamber of Commerce told me it would be. We have many store owners and restaurant owners in our audience, and I bring to you the perspective of an innkeeper. I know where our tourists are coming from. I know how they found out about Tarpon Springs. I know why they chose to visit Tarpon Springs, and I know what they want to do when they are here, because we talk about it every single morning at the breakfast table at the inn. They are wonderful people. They're coming from all over the world. They come with money, lots of money. They have disposable income to spend, and they spend it. I send them to your restaurants. I send them to your stores. I send them on your boat cruises, to your churches, our museums, and our beaches. But they primarily come to Tarpon Springs to see our historic, authentic, unspoiled, working port. We have Mayberry USA to offer to the world, and they are coming to experience it. Now, here's an idea that I thought of listening to Karen Lemon speak and hearing the results of that survey, and I'm shaking because I'm not a public speaker. I'm an innkeeper. I love my guests. You know the Tarpon Inn? You know where it is? It's next door to my inn. It's next door to John Tarrapini's house. It's right there on the bayou where they throw the cross for Epiphany. It's a disgrace that we let that sit there like that. If you have some pennies for Pinellas money to spend, maybe the city would purchase it, demolish it, put some green space there. And if we really need an amphitheater overlooking the water, that would be a wonderful place for it. Thank you.
My name is Linda Christman. My address is 303 Mariner Drive, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I'm here to talk about the Tarpon Springs Golf Course. I sent an email to the mayor, commissioners, city manager, and police chief last week, strongly objecting to the conclusion by city officials that there was a gambling problem at the Tarpon Springs Golf Course resulting in a threat of a golf course top management of a felony crime. I pointed out that the city had become a laughingstock in the general press and in golf publications. One of my colleagues in one of the golf leagues said that he had received a comment from someone in the Virgin Islands, and that it had made the newspaper, Tarpon Springs had made the newspaper of the gambling issue in a small town in Maine. I concluded that the city manager and the police chief had overreacted to a disgruntled employee letter. Well, in response, City Manager Locurus said I was, quote, "absolutely incorrect" on most of my statements, that Mr. Winship was under, quote, "no," capital letters, N-O, pressure to resign, that the press was, quote, "completely inaccurate," and that the legal professionals were not correctly informed. I still object, and I stand by my statements. It seems that the police investigation and the answers to the public comment by the city manager have been handled with confrontation, not with questions. Staff were ignored, rather than being allowed and encouraged to have input. Little support was given to the Tarpon Springs course, its staff, and the 14 leagues who play there. I'm a member of the Tarpon Springs Women's Golf Association. Finally, the 16-year employee, Chuck Winship, who has spent so much time in the last two years planning for the renovation of the golf course, I request that he be considered for some consulting role in this ongoing project.
Good evening. My name is Nicolette Henderson. I live at 2103 Harbor Watch Drive here in Tarpon Springs, and I'm here to ask you to please respect the historic integrity of the Sponge Docks. It's a working dock. You've got sponge divers today who are still, you know, working sponges. You've got shrimpers who need that dock down there. Come up with something different, something better, that doesn't destroy the historic integrity of the Sponge Docks, please.
If y'all would do me a favor, please. I know some are new, some are not. Clapping is something we don't do. Booing is something that we don't do. We're going to let everybody have their piece, say whatever they want to, and then we can just expedite the meeting. I would appreciate that.
Paul Capel, Quail Forest, Tarpon Springs. As you just heard, the, our golf course has been a national joke. We've made the Golf Channel, Golf Digest, the PGA Tour. We've been mocked by them and probably several others, but, and it has been a joke. I'm a member of several leagues at the course and have been for years. One league has over 80 members. One has over 50 members. Everybody's concerned about the future of the golf course. 15, 16 years ago, we got Chuck Winship, one of the most respected and capable golf professionals, to come in, and frankly, he must have needed a challenge, because at that time, our course was known as a goat farm, and he turned it into a golf course with gradual improvements every year. And now, we've been told we're going to get new greens, which would really finish off all the work that Chuck has done. And now that he's been forced out, all of our members are concerned that the improvements are going to stop. I mean, it's a shame to lose an employee of that caliber, but naturally, all the members are concerned. We want to know, are the improvements going to continue?
My name is Jason Sardulis. I'm a third-generation citizen of Tarpon Springs. I'm 45 years old, and I've never once spoken at a city hall meeting, but the issue I'm about to talk about has moved me so much that I feel I have to come up and say something. The issue is the proposed redevelopment plan of the Sponge Docks. This plan is unsuitable for the proposed location of the docks. If a town, if a place can have a soul, then the Sponge Docks would be the soul of our town, if you believe in that thing. In fact, the Sponge Docks are so unique, there's no other working dock like it in the entire nation. And this redevelopment plan would, for all practical purposes, eliminate our working dock and turn it into a waterfront park. It's the sponge industry and the working dock that makes us different from every other place in this country. It's why tourists come here. They want something real. They want something authentic. That scares us. We live in a world that's in the age of plastic, disposable plastic in bedroom communities. But we, we've got a living link in this town to our past. It's genuine. It's real. It's one of a kind. And this redevelopment plan would compromise that, if not abolish it. The commissioners and the mayor of this town are servants of the people, and they have been elected to represent and protect the interests of this community and to address the needs of the people. And this community is saying that it is opposed to this redevelopment plan at the proposed location of the Sponge Docks. These Sponge Docks, they're all of ours. It's, it's, we, it's ours. It's not the vision of one person or one entity. It's ours. And anything that alters these docks should be done by consensus and the approval of the community. But what I'm seeing is a group of people that, for all practical purposes, feel they've been disenfranchised from this redevelopment process and issue. This, this is not a clash of wills or opposing camps. What this is, this is a crossroads. This is a crossroads of identity. Are we going to embrace and promote the sponging industry and the working dock that sustains it and the other fishing industries of our town? Or are we going to abandon or compromise the one truly unique element that we collectively have? And in doing so, we will jeopardize the continued existence of the sponging industry. One day, people are going to ask, when did the sponge industry die out? Why did it die out? It's not dead. It's still there. Sponges are still coming up. They're being bought. They're being sold by locals. As commissioners and mayor, what do you want your legacy to be? Do you want your legacy to be that city officials that presided over the death knell of the sponging industry and the termination of our working dock, along with the other businesses that are dependent upon it?
If you can just wrap that up, Mrs. Sardulis. It seemed like you might have some other things to say, but there's some other people in order.
Yes, sir. I will wrap it up right now. An American that I greatly admired once said, "Do your duty in all things. You cannot do more. You should never wish to do less." And I urge, I humbly beg all of you, that you will do your duty, and you will address the concerns of this community, and we will redesign a new plan with the consensus of everyone. Thank you very much for the opportunity of spoken here for my first time in 45 years.
Good evening. I'm Melody Palmer-Hassel, 329 Pineapple Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I'm a seventh-generation Tarponite. I'm here tonight to strongly oppose to the plans that are before all of us in the community about the beautification of the sponge exchange. I just, for fun today, went on the computer and Googled Tarpon Springs, Florida. The first thing that came up, of course, is Wikipedia. We're all familiar with that, that search. Says Tarpon Springs has the highest percentage of Greek-Americans in any city in the U.S. That's the second sentence of that website. It goes on to talk about the history of Tarpon Springs. In the second paragraph, "The first Greek immigrants arrived in the city during the 1800s when they were hired to work as divers in the growing sponge harvesting industry." We have a crown jewel here. This is what attracts the tourists. This is what attracts the money to our economy. This is what your taxpayers want to preserve. The plan that is before you is beautiful. Is it for Tarpon Springs Sponge Exchange? No. We need to come up with another plan. Then, in the third paragraph of the same website, "Tourist Attractions." "The shops along Doticaeneus Avenue and the sponge exchange, Sponge Dock Districts of Tarpon Springs are still thriving as both historic and current tourist destinations." Along the ways, it passes the marinas, the sponge boats, the docks along the north side of the street, and the historic sponge exchange. of the street, and the historic sponge exchange on the south. We have to preserve this as a historic monument. Again, this is what attracts people to our community. Then I went further, and I went onto our own city's website. The pictures that come up, sponge diver. Chamber Commerce site, sponge diver. We need to listen to our merchants. We need to listen to the people that are working in the community, bringing in the income, as to what they need to keep this city what it is. I'm all about change. I'm all about progress, but we do need to preserve some of this historic preservation. I took it one more step further, and I went to Facebook. And on there, our city manages that, I don't know who keeps up the Facebook page, it says, "On February eighteenth," that's just last month, "What is the best international travel destinations in North America?" This was a report done by Peter Greensburg of the CBS Morning News Show. The very first story, "Tarpon Springs Sponge Exchange." It talked about the divers, it talked about when they started. It is a very, very important, vital part of this community, and all I'm asking tonight is that you just review the plans, and like others have stated here tonight, maybe come up with something a little more feasible, a little more... That everybody could work together and get it where it needs to be, and not this proposed plan. Thank you.
My name is Charles Samarcus. I reside at eleven-ten South Florida Avenue, and my wife will tell you she owns the nineteen-ten Inn, but on the paper, my name's actually on there with hers, and together we own the Inn, but she is the one that runs it and operates it. And I'm very proud. She did a great job, even though I'm the one usually opening my big mouth and speaking. But I wanna reiterate something that just shocked me, because we talked to, and I go down and I have breakfast, and we have talked to many people, and we literally have people from all over the world, but they come to Tarpon Springs because Tarpon Springs reminds them of what America's about, not the newness of it, but the oldness of it. I'm a part-owner of a house that's a hundred and three years old, and when people look at it, they see history, they see longevity, they see something that reminds them of, at times, they think, maybe better, maybe simpler. But when you do dramatic change to something that is so ingrained, because we have people that came as children, they have brought their children, and now they're bringing their grandchildren, and what they are seeing is something that's similar to what my grandfather saw when he had his boat down there, and in fact, his boat is the boat that's the city of Tarpon Springs boat. It outlived him, and it hopefully will outlive me, and hopefully it'll outlive my children. But the point is, when you're making dramatic change, our city is not about dramatic change. Our city is not taking something that is working and is doing well and trying to make it better. There's a saying that grammatically isn't correct, but if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Well, there's no reason to go down there now and make these dramatic changes, because it is working. So, I would just ask you to keep that in mind. Second of all, since I have a few seconds left, and it's an open agenda, I saw Bruce Burgum from Florida Hospital, North Pinellas here. I'm on the foundation board. I could not be prouder to be on a board of a hospital and what the changes they have done. It is phenomenal, it is amazing, but what that hospital is to our city is incredible. I wouldn't have said I was proud to be on the board of Helen Ellis, and I wouldn't join when I was asked before to do anything for the hospital, but what Bruce and his staff has done is nothing short of amazing and phenomenal, and any support that our city can give the hospital, I think, would be very much appreciated and needed. Thank you.
My name is Rita Kuzryas, and I live at six-eleven Hope Street, Tarpon Springs. I have been here before. I'm against, me and my husband, we are against the redevelopment. I get out of my front door, and the first thing I see is the river in front of me. And believe me, in the morning, when the fishing boats are going out, they're having a hard time turning around. And if you make that river narrower, it's gonna be very, very hard. Also, if any of you have time, come down and listen to the people, to the tourists, what they say about Tarpon Springs. They like it the way it is. They like, because it feels old, and they enjoy that. The sponge docks should stay, the river should stay as it is. It should not be any narrower, and we're against it. Thank you.
I'm Pauline Papless Phillips, six-ten Polis Lane. There's a lot to say about all of this. Biggest thing is, a hundred years ago, over a hundred years ago, people came here to leave their islands where they were starving, to come here and get the gold out of the sea and go home. But they didn't go home, they stayed, and they brought their families, and they developed something, and you know, the building of the sponge docks area happened over time and over happenstance. These men were out there thirty days at a time, sponging. Their families were here, hungry, so someone opened a store for them and gave them credit. And then, people started hearing about sponges and coming to see, what is a sponge? What's a sponge boat? Is that some kind of creature? So people started coming here, and then, they were hungry, so somebody opened a little restaurant. And then they wanted to buy sponges, and somebody opened a store. And they built those buildings down there, and they don't look like anything in the islands. They're not supposed to. If those people who came here a hundred years ago wanted it to look like the Greek islands, they probably would have built it that way. And it doesn't mean we can't ever change anything, but we really, really should not let go of what we have. I have a picture of a little girl standing on the wooden dock. That little girl is myself, a year old. I didn't bring it to show you, but the docks were wooden, and that's what people, the old timers remember. That's... Today, I saw an eighty-two-year-old man in the store, and he's a friend of mine, and we were talking, and I said, "What are you gonna do about this sponge docks thing?" And he says, "Well, I can't do anything, because I don't have the money and clout to make them listen to me." He said, "But you know what I want, don't you?" And I said, "Yes, you want the wooden dock." He said, "That's exactly right. I want them to keep it the way it is, the way it was. We don't need to be Fort Lauderdale. We don't need to be Fort Lauderdale West. We need to be the sponge docks, and we need to have our sponge boats there, so the people can see them." My son is here tonight, and he's wearing a t-shirt that says, "Tarpon Springs, Sponge Capital of the World." Well, if we close our docks, and our sponge boats have to go to Dunedin, to the Scottish Town, then we can't call ourselves Sponge Capital of the World anymore. We need to be careful. We just, you know? It's like the report earlier, the C I R A report, that some of the suggestions people have made is to have a downtown gathering place with a bandstand, and concerts, and this and that. Well, guess what? We already had those things in Tarpon. There, at Tarpon and Pinellas, that's a parking lot, was a park, and it had benches, and people gathered there every night. And they had music, and they had visits, and they had ice cream. But we took it away, because we thought we needed parking lots. We needed parking spaces. So we did that. You know, we just can't do those things over and over. And in all of this, I'm thinking, okay, we're going to renovate the sponge docks, make it what it's not. What are we doing to downtown? We're keeping it the way it is. We're doing our very best to preserve those buildings and give it that old flavor, the old history part. What about our biggest history? The hundred-year-old history? Out here tonight, there are a lot of people who are related to each other, and they may or may not know it. Mark Lacouris's father was my grandfather's godson. My son's godparents are Charlie and Annie Samarcus. Nicolette and I are related through people in our families marrying. Annette Alexu, her grandmother and my grandmother were cousins. So we're like that in Tarpon. It's here, and here, and here, it spreads out. We're all related in some way, and we all have the same feeling, to keep these docks. One of the biggest things in Tarpon, to people who have been here forever, is, when they go downtown for something, well, let's ride by the docks on the way, on the way home. Well, guess what? If you close the docks, so that it's only walking, there's one of our biggest pleasures gone. In Charleston, South Carolina, when you go to town, you ride by the Battery to see the water. It's just something you do. In Tarpon Springs, you ride by the docks, and we're gonna lose that. We're gonna lose everything we had.
You might not have heard the bell, Ms. Phillips, but...
I'm sorry?
The bell rang?
The bell rang?
Yes, well...
David, you know I could talk forever.
I know it. That's why I'm trying to help.
But anyway, okay, but I wanna tell you, we don't need to be a theme park. There are enough theme parks in this country. We need to be what we are, and the... Okay. You'll see me again. Thank you.
Again, Anita Protas, nine-on-one Bay Shore Drive, and we've butted heads on this issue before, but tonight, I wanna talk to our city manager. We sit together at Rotary, choking each other with food, arguing over issues, and he knows that I saved a seat for him, and we were talking about the docks one day, and he says, "You know, Anita, you can't live in the past." Well, I'm not living in the past. I'm living to protect a heritage that his fifth great-grandfather, and my husband's fifth great-grandfather, who were priests, built a church together in Eina, Greece. And I went to Eina this summer. He gave me a picture of the priest's take that they had from here, and to see the family home, and to see the church, it was beautiful. And when you met the family, they said how wonderful it was that Lacouris went to Tarpon Springs, Florida, and married Pearl, who became the first operator, telephone operator, in Tarpon Springs. And his legacy was that he worked with the sponges and the sponge industry. And I feel, Mr. Lacouris, with all due respect, between your family, the Tulamerases, and the Angels, and the Protases, and all the families out here, what you wanna change on the docks is a slap in their face. You're stepping on their grave and their history and what they've given you. Yes, he said, because money is coming from the north, down on the coast, Wikiwachi, Cedar Key, all of them are gonna redo their docks and their waterfront, and I want a piece of that pie. I want that money in Tarpon. But if we're all alike, they're gonna spend up there and not come here. We are so unique. We have so much here going for us, that that plan needs to be at the Vanoy, it needs to be down in Naples, it needs to be in Sarasota, or on the other coast. We have so much here, work with this group. Let's get what we really need to make shade down there for the people to sit, so they don't burn up in the sun. You go to Conymos, Greece, the same dock like we have here. You go to Eina, you go all the way around all the islands. It's what we have here. Let's not lose what we've got, because once you lose your historic significance and the beauty, you can't regain it. In historic preservation, going around the south, all these cities took out their city parks. They took out all their historic, and now they wanna put it back. They can't get the money to return, and it doesn't return easily. Yes, we are a big family in Tarpon, and we're your family. And Mayor, I found papers from the sponge exchange, then my records, where your father helped with the sponge boats and clip sponges. He worked for my grandfather, Mr. Tulameras, the tool machine shop down there, working on the sponge boats. And I'm gonna show you those and give you copies. Mr. Mama Zello, your wife's grandfather came over here from Conymos to work in the sponge exchange and the sponge industry and the sponge docks. Mr. Terrapani's grandfather sponsored a lot of the sponge boats years ago, monetarily, to help them and with their clothes and what they needed. We're all related here, in one way or another, to work in the sponge industry. Don't throw it away, and don't give it up. And Mr. Mark, you've got a lot of history behind you. Be proud of it and want to preserve it. Money isn't everything. It does help, but once you lose that historic, you'll never gain it back.
I wasn't gonna speak here tonight, but I'm gonna say something. My name's Alexandra Papas-Gould, thirty-nine, forty-eight, Sullivan Lane. Fourth generation. I mean, we're all sitting here talking about the docks. Why don't we get the sponge boats, the guys that own the sponge boats, the sponge divers, and get them together, see what they need, and what would help them out? They're the ones that keep us all alive. So why don't we ask them what they need, and what would help them, instead of trying to get rid of them, and send them to Disney World, because they'll open up a sponge theme park there, and then we won't have anything here? And I did offer, I did have a meeting with Mr. Lacouris, my sister, and I am late on this, because I didn't know about all the meetings and everything, and I did offer to take the amphitheater and bring it across the street, and to work with y'all. And I still offer that, but he said that, and I understand this too, that redoing things costs money. And, but if there's any way we can... First, let's get the divers and the sponge boats and ask them what they need. I mean, everybody's talking about what they need, what this needs. How about them? That's what keeps us all alive. That's all I need to say. My offer's still there, though.
My name is Gracie Samarcus. I live at eleven-ten South Florida Avenue, and I'm here to talk about the sponge docks renovation project. I'm in my first year at the University of South Florida, and I've lived in Tarpon Springs my entire life. I'm a fifth-generation Tarponite, and I'm finally away from home for the first time, living in Tampa. And every time I come home to visit, I drive through the sponge docks, because it reminds me of home, and my history and culture, and where I come from. And it's just a nice reminder of all the history for past two-hundred years. Most recently, I was on spring break last week, and I brought a group of friends home to see the sponge docks. And one of my friends is from Dubai, and so he's used to modern and luxurious buildings and architecture, and he was so impressed with the sponge docks. He loved it, because it's so different than everything he's been around growing up before. And my other friends, they just, they thought it was adorable and charming, and that's what the tourists like. They aren't coming for modern and luxurious. They're coming for charming, historic culture, authentic, everything that the sponge docks already has. So we don't need to change any of it. We need to preserve the history that's been around for generations. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I only came to speak about sponge docks, but I have to say two other things. I appreciate Chief Coach investigating a reported problem. Even though the Tampa Bay Times doesn't like us in their editorials, when something's reported, it has to be investigated, and it's not necessarily personal. Two is, the hospital, a month or so ago, Consumer Reports, I don't know if you picked up, you guys read Consumer Reports, we were rated one of the highest in this area. That's our hospital. We ought to be proud of that. The sponge docks is an issue you guys, ladies and gentlemen, have heard. I've heard it quite a bit lately. Unfortunately, it started a couple of years ago with landscaping, and trees, and shrubs, and it grew to what it is today. I think most of the people here speaking tonight like parts of it, but not all of it. I like parts of it. I've spoken to a couple of the commissioners here. They like parts of it, but not all of it. I don't think it's too late to put it on hold for sixty or ninety days, to sit down once again, now that everybody really understands what's going on, and talk to them about it, and see what it's gonna take. You haven't spent a whole lot of money yet, but you could save a whole lot of grief. Don't let this one issue split the town. I heard the 82-year-old man liked the wood docks. I understand bringing the wood docks back are there. It's in the same, what you're proposing. I hope I'm not asking too much for you guys to do this tonight since this is a regular session. I hope you've heard enough that you want to make this dissension go away and there is a lot of dissension. There's also a lot of misunderstanding. So delaying something that's been talked about for two years that didn't start this way, certainly not going to hurt anything, can only build Tarpon stronger. We are a strong community. If we weren't, we wouldn't be here tonight. It's very important. I don't care if it's a sponge boat out there or a hook boat or somebody's freediving with a mask, they're still bringing the sponge back to our port. The shrimp boats still come on the other side. We do, we have to guarantee, we have to preserve that because once it's gone, it's never coming back. Thank you.
Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. Heard some very telling and interesting comments tonight. I think Mr. Obowski gave a good suggestion about letting the public know in advance of what's coming up. And I had looked at the agenda. I didn't see anything on here about sponge docks. And that wasn't what I was going to actually come up and talk about. But hearing a number of things, I do want to start with this. First off, I'm going to take my hat off and say condolences and sympathies to our former city manager, Ellen Posovich. I know a lot of people know I've had battles with her in the past and those were in the past. But there are a couple of things that Ellen did that I was strongly in favor of, still strongly in favor of, and one I'm curious about. First, we know the water plant. Ellen brought us that vision that we could do it, showed us the information, had staff work and go to Zephyr Hills and Brooksville and everywhere to get it done. And we're going to get our independence of water. And I see later we got a water conservation presentation and I'll maybe say something then. But the second thing that she brought up then, and the ball's been dropped. And what I keep hearing from everybody is the sponge docks for the sponge boats, the shrimpers, the fishers. She formed a working waterfront committee. And there was a group for a while that met, I think, Mike, you were on it. So we did at some point make an attempt to try to find ways. And Mr. Belleris has been here before. We've heard it. What people come, yeah, they come to the sponge docks, but if you don't have shrimp boats and sponge boats and fish boats across the street supporting the industry that developed the tourism, you're going to be out of whack. And as these people say, we can't go to a, you know, Disney World, Mickey Mouse-type thing. That's not us. But if you really want to try to help solve some of this, take some of that money and find ways to get that working waterfront group back and start finding ways to get boat repair places in, to find ways to make the river more expandable for the boats to turn. What happened to the Cox? I don't see Renee. She was out here earlier and maybe Ms. Lemmons doesn't know about it, but we had a big Cox Seafood was going to redo their whole thing over there. I know times change, but there again, take some of that money and maybe give them a grant to do their building, to do the, you know, look across the river. There's where the gold will shine from. Thank you.
My name is Henry Coburn, 425 South Spring Boulevard. I'm fortunate enough not only to be a third-generation member of the Tarpon Springs community, but I'm also fortunate enough to be a seventh-generation Floridian from Cedar Key, Florida. And when I see the working port that we have, one of the very few left in the state and in the country, it's so uniquely American as well as Greek. And Tarpon Springs is, obviously, it's a Greek community, but it's a community that embraces a very diverse group of people. And you see that on the docks. You see that in the restaurants and in the stores. It's, I'm echoing on what we've already said here tonight, but when I talk to tourists, they talk about how much they appreciate the authenticity of the docks. And I think that if we make these changes, we're going to lose that. And I'm proud to be a Floridian. I'm proud to be an American, but I'm more proud to be a sponger at heart. And I'd love to see that continue. Thank you.
You know we don't yell from the audience. You've been up here, so you know how that goes. I thank you. If anybody else would like to speak, if you would come up to the front, I was going to close it, but...
Mike Cusco to 623 East Tarpon Avenue. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. You know, from my position and sometimes, you know, where I stand, it's neither left or right of this issue is because as an attorney, I represent people on the docks and quite a few people on the docks. And I don't know what their position is, so I don't want to sit there and tell you what their position might be. But I will tell you this, that it is a working waterfront. And my concern is, and I'll be frank about it, I didn't look at the plans. I've not been involved in the plans, but I'm hearing the echo of everybody talking here. I went to a meeting last night. I heard the concerns of some of the, a lot of the sponge fishermen who moored their boats at the sponge docks. I'm also concerned about the shrimp fishermen that are on the north end of the river. To the extent that any change or encroachment into the river may affect the navigational ability of these large shrimp boats coming in or the sponge boats, I think it may be time for there to be a step back and reassess because, you know, I was, as was mentioned, I was on the committee that helped develop the working waterfront. And it was designed to be, we changed the ordinances and the codes to allow and to embrace a working waterfront. You know, I don't want whatever plan that may be developed taking a step backwards from keeping it as a working waterfront. So, you know, I would ask that those people who do navigate those waters to come up here and say how the plan may affect them. I don't sponge. I don't shrimp. I don't know, as a, I'm a boat owner, but I don't come in and out of that river and it's not my commercial or my way of making a living out of that river. So I think it would be important that those of you who are in the audience, who make your living in this, on the river, come up and have, say a few things. Thank you.
Well, seeing no other individuals that have public comments, I'll say this, is that, first of all, yes, ma'am?
I'm a wife of a fisherman, a shrimper, on the other side of the river. Right now, where we stand, we can park three boats out from the dock. I don't know whatever's going on this side of the river, how that's going to affect us in being able to maneuver boats and everything else, getting the product on and off the boats, turning them around like they've been talking about. Also, the dredging end of it, when the, I don't know if this changes from a fishing port to a whatever port, if the Army Corps of Engineers will be able to come in and still dredge this port so that, you know, we can still function or whatever. Like I said, I don't know the particulars, but if it's affected, if it affects the other side of the river, where we can't function and have, be able to do our jobs and whatever else we need to do to maneuver boats or to park the boats, to unload the boats, to do our business, you're going to put us out of business. So I hope you take that into consideration also because there's many of us on the other side of the river that have been living here, living, myself, but third-generation fishermen, and that could cramp or kill them. So please take that into consideration also. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I was about to say is this, as I close it now, boys' public comments, and that's what that was. This is not an agenda item. The reason that everybody was able to speak on the item is because you could speak on any item that was not on the agenda. So we don't have that item on the agenda. All of the comments that you made, we take, we take seriously. Some we've heard before, some we haven't. You know, I still say to those that would like to, to speak with the city manager, some know Mr. Ed Harman, who is the architect of record for what this project is concerned. Some of the things you say have some validity, some don't, but I'm not going to belabor this in terms of that. I would say this, is that it was mentioned that some of the people that spoke have not seen the plans and the rest of that. Speaking from hearsay, I would ask that you would do that, that you would see the plans. I would share with you that everybody that has any type of investment or interest in the docks have had a chance to talk. The spongers, everything. There's been so many meetings now that it's, to me, it's mind-boggling. I don't know what brought everybody out tonight, but we're always glad to see you. But I would ask is that if you would try to get some good information. And then if there are some things that we need to do, I could share with you. I don't think that anybody up here wants to kill the sponge docks. Don't understand the sponge dock's significance, the heritage of the Greek people and their relationship to Tarpon Springs. So I'm not sure what brought everybody out, but I'd just say this, let's try to get as much information as possible. Communicate with the city manager. Anybody want to talk with me? Y'all know that, hey, my door is always open. We don't have to come and take an hour to say some of the things that have been said before. And some of the things have been said that's inaccurate. So I'm just asking if we can continue to do this as we move ahead. And I've said before, even though now we're a few hundred thousand dollars into this, I hate to do any project that people really feel like they don't want. Nobody wants to force this project on anybody. I can guarantee you, there are a few other citizens in this town that are asking, why are you spending any money at the docks at all? They have businesses there. They should be spending their own money to do whatever they want to down there. So to get beat by some people for doing something you think is going to help and be beat by others because you're not spending the money in their area that is not a comfortable place to be. So I'm just asking if we could do that, try to get some good information, talk with the city manager, talk with the architect, talk with others about what is happening there. If there are some things that really need to change, I'm sure that those accommodations can be made at some point. So with that, we will go to our regular agenda, which is proclamation. And the first one ironically is Greek Independence Day. This proclamation reads, City of Tarpon Springs, whereas we commemorate the 193rd anniversary of Greece's independence, the celebration of Greek Independence Day on March 25th, 2014 draws inspiration from one of the holiest days for Greek Orthodox Christians. And whereas on Greek Independence Day, we celebrate our special ties of friendship, history and shared values with Greece. Whereas Greek Americans have made a mark in every field by enhancing our culture and enriching our commerce and defending our freedom. And whereas their strong record of public services has also strengthened our democracy and their contributions have made America a better place. Whereas Sunday, March 23rd, 2014, has been chosen for the Greek Independence Day Parade. And the City of Tarpon Springs now therefore, I, David O'Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me, Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim March 25th, 2014 as Greek Independence Day. And I urge all residents to join the celebration plan for the contribution of the Greek community of our society. I don't know if Mr. Sors is here. The next item we have is item number two, National Boys and Girls Club Week. This proclamation reads, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas the young people of the City of Tarpon Springs are tomorrow's leaders and many such people need professional youth services to help them reach their full potential. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Tarpon Springs provides services to young people annually. And the Boys and Girls Club is a place where great futures start. They are at the forefront of efforts in academic success, healthy lifestyles, good character and citizenship. Whereas the theme of the celebration, Clubs, which stands for career, leadership, understanding, brotherhood and stamina, reflects the purpose of the Boys and Girls Club experience. Whereas Boys and Girls Club organizations in our state help ensure that our young people keep off the streets, offering them a safe and supportive place to go and provide them with quality programs. And whereas today, we extend a sincere vote of tribute and support to the Boys and Girls Club of Tarpon Springs for its invaluable contributions to the betterment of life in our city. Now therefore, I, David O'Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim March 23rd through the 29th, 2014, as National Boys and Girls Club Week. And we have Ms. Samantha Olivera. Does she come? Item number four is, item number three, I'm sorry, is Water Conservation Month. And this proclamation reads, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas water is a basic and essential need for our living creatures. And whereas the State of Florida Water Management District and the City of Tarpon Springs are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs and the State of Florida has designated April, typically a dry month, when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs, especially events. And whereas every business, industry, school and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. And whereas every business, industry, school and citizen can help by saving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. And now therefore, I, David O'Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month. And call upon each citizen, business in the Tarpon Springs, in the City of Tarpon Springs to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and become more aware of the need to save water. Mr. Bob Robertson, and I think we have Estella Gray from Government Affairs Program Manager. Swift part.
Thank you. Would I like to say something?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager. And tonight I have Estella Gray, Government Affairs Program Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager. And tonight I have Estella Gray, Government Affairs Liaison from the Southwest Florida Water Management District here. She'd like to say a few words on behalf of the district.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. As Bob mentioned, I'm Estella Gray, the Government Affairs Liaison for the Southwest Florida Water Management District. And as you stated in the proclamation, you know, typically Florida is the driest time of the year. I mean, April is the driest time of year for Florida and especially this area. And, you know, it takes partnerships with our cities and counties and cities like Tarpon Springs to bring awareness to this issue. We couldn't do it alone. So we make a point to travel between 16 counties to as many city and county commission meetings to receive the proclamation and shake hands with the mayor and council or commission. So we really appreciate this this evening. I know your agenda's pretty lengthy. I won't be before you wrong. And I really enjoy, in fact, I'll give this personal story, and I'm going off script here. When I first started at the Water Management District, Tarpon Springs was one of the first cities I met with, with Paul and Bob. And it was one of the most welcoming and rewarding meetings, and I feel we have a great relationship with staff here, and that is important for what we execute at the Water Management District. And I wanted to thank staff for inviting me and thank the commission this evening.
Thank you. Any public comments on the site?
Peter Delax, 514 Ashland Avenue. Thank you, Estelle, for your comments about our staff and the importance of spreading the word. First word I want to say, it's not a monthly thing. It's got to be a day-to-day thing. You have to learn how to incorporate water-saving measures in your day-to-day activities. How you wash your dishes. I don't know if you saw the movie Meet the Fockers, where Robert De Niro and Dustin Hoffman and Dustin Hoffman's in the bathroom, and afterward he says, if it's yellow, let it mellow; if it's brown, flush it down. I know it may sound strange, but you'd be surprised, you know, you have some guests, you have some family, you have kids, in and out, in and out, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 flushes. That's a lot of water. Something else that needs to be done on a bigger scale. We need to expand our reclaim water abilities to get more people off of using fresh water for watering yards and lawns. We need to get more people aware of how to do lawns that don't need as much water. These are ways you can do things to save a lot of water. And if we're going to be spending 40-something-plus million total, and we haven't still seen the end result of our putting in water, a water plant, I don't want us to be spending all this money just so somebody can water their yard two or three times a week with fresh water that we're spending a lot of money to do. So there's a lot of ways you can save water, but it has to be a day-to-day process. It's not just waving a banner once a month saying, save water. We have to really find ways to educate people on how they can go about changing things in their daily lives that affect water usage. Even restaurants, they are so in the habit of see five, six people at a table, they'll bring five, six glasses of water. Where a lot of people anymore, you know, they just don't drink tap water there. They'll order a bottle of water or they'll drink something else. So restaurants need to, in a sense, we'll serve you water if you'd like, but we're not going to, you know, put it out. These are small things. And even in a restaurant, one of the other things is all the plates and silverware. You don't realize it, you know, here's a plate for your bread, and then here's a plate under the salad bowl, and then here's a plate under the plate for your entree, and then six silverwares. Well, in a restaurant, you're required to, you can't just leave it there, it's clean, you know, not used, you got to wash it. That's a lot of water. So there's, there's things that can be done on a day-to-day basis, business-wise and personally-wise, to all contribute to that. Because I don't know, no matter what you people think, there's two things you cannot survive without. Air, water. You can go a long time without eating, and you'll find things to chew on, but air and water are subsistence, and they are commodities. And as you see what's going on in California with the droughts, and we've had our water wars with states up the road, water is a precious commodity. We must preserve it, conserve it, and use it wisely.
Good evening. I would like to agree with his comment about reclaim water.
Name the address for the record.
I'm sorry?
Your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Gustavo Trujillo. I live in 109 North Groves Avenue, just down the road. I would like the city, I would like to see the city expand their access for the citizens for reclaim water service. I'm a fairly new transplant to the city, four years ago. It was one of the first things that I did, because my property, which is just down the road, didn't have already that service. I understand that it's, it's each of the citizens prerogative to add that service to their home or not, but perhaps I would like to see if there's a way to also reduce the entry point to this valuable service. Perhaps we can get more people watering their lawns with reclaimed water instead of potable water, which is also very expensive to treat. But I also understand that reclaimed water is a limited resource, and I know that during months of, of high use, you know, those reserves get depleted as well. So perhaps maybe some more investment in that. But I think that reclaimed water would be a good thing for everyone to have, if possible.
With that, we'll go to item number four, which is National Service Recognition Day. We have a proclamation that will be mailed. And item number five is Donate Life Month, and it's another proclamation that will be mailed, so I won't read those. We'll now go to our presentation, Chamber of Commerce, Beautification Award.
Sue Thomas, President, Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce, 111 East Tarpon Avenue. I'm back. One of the things we have really been trying to work on is to upgrade the businesses that are along Alderwick 19. There are a lot of them that have been there for a long time. They look like they've been there for a long time. And we had one that just changed the whole corner tremendously. If you remember across kind of from Mama Maria's, there was on Pine Street, just a vacant lot with a little blue house sitting back there. It is now a garden center, and I can't think of anything better to go on that. Dave Sterns bought the property, has been, done a wonderful job fixing it up, and Sherry Went wouldn't stand up and recognize it, but I think she had a little bit of a hand in it. Dave, we are so pleased to have you come into Tarpon Avenue, or on Alderwick 19, and make it look wonderful.
Thank you. I could be more pleased to.
I want to present this to you to add to it, and if you'll look at Reggie, and put your head over the top.
And I'd like to say too, like I said, I'm very pleased to get this.
Come on over here to the microphone.
And I'd like to thank Sherry Went and Olympic Realty, and the owner, Cleo Patrick. Between all of them, they, everybody's helped, you know, to get to where I'm at right now. And things are going well, and I couldn't be happier. Thank you so much.
Need to make your yard look really wonderful. This is a great place to start, because he has really neat things in there. So stop by on the corner of Pine and Alderwick 19. Take a look at what Dave's done. It's wonderful.
And we do two thank you for all you do to help Tarpon look better, and we hope your business is very prosperous. Are there any public comments on the site? Then we'll go to item number seven, Florida Hospital, North Pinellas, presentation.
Before Bruce gets started, Mike Kuskoudis, 623 East Tarpon Avenue, I'm Vice Chairman of the Board. I want to thank the city manager and the commission for this opportunity to make this presentation. In speaking with the city manager, discussing the changes or the dynamic changes of healthcare, he thought it was a good idea to have the hospital address some of the issues that the hospital will be facing moving forward. So Mark, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Mayor, this is Bruce Burgum, 1649 Seabreeze Drive, Tarpon Springs. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Commissioners, Mayor, Mark, appreciate it. Chief, thank you. So I wanted to, wanted to share with you a little bit about 2013 and then looking So just wanted to share something with you with regard to our vision statement. This is the Adnys Health System Vision Statement. As, as you know, Adnys Health System, or through Florida Hospital, is the, we manage the hospital, own the hospital there. And this is on our vision statement, and I just wanted to read it to you. It says, "Seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have carried you, because if it prospers, you too will prosper." So this particular saying is on our Vision 2020 for, for our whole company. So I just thought it was very meaningful, you know, that, that this is part of our vision and our mission. What I didn't show you is some of the specifics of that vision statement, but I can share that with you another time. So just wanted to recap with you. Florida Hospital, Adnys Health System, formed in 1973. We have over 45 campuses. We have over 70,000 employees. We treat over 4.5 million patients a year. We have 16 nursing care facilities, and we have over 22 home health and hospice facilities throughout, located in 10 states. So Florida Hospital, North Pinellas, as you can see, we're a faith-based, 24/7 chaplain service. We have 168 beds. 150 of those beds are acute care. 18 beds are rehab there, and the rehab unit is always full. So we are looking to expand some additional beds there. We have nine operating rooms. We've got up on the fifth floor, we have four of our operating rooms, and I'm telling you, the fifth floor is really one of the gems of the hospital as it relates to taking care of our patients. Have endoscopy rooms, we have a cardiac cath room. We are a STEMI-receiving center, so if we have, if our citizens suffer a heart attack, we are able to provide that care there at the hospital. We have a nine-bed women's center, two C-section rooms located within the nine-bed women's center, so we don't have to go to another floor there to take care of our ladies there. We have a 13-bed critical care unit. You know, in June, we will be adding some new technology to our critical care unit. We're going to be providing 24/7 continuous coverage provided by critical care medicine doctors. We will be the second hospital within Florida Hospital to receive that service, and so we're one of 15 hospitals within the Adnys Health System receiving that resource. So it is an additional tool that we can provide for our physicians to provide better care for our community and our patients. Full-service diagnostic center, won't read through all of those. We have a DEXA machine, digital mammography. That's, that was about a $450,000 investment we made a couple of years ago. We have over 700 employees there. I believe that makes us the largest employer in the community. And we recently, through the generous support of the foundation, we recently acquired robotic surgery. And so that allows our physicians, our surgeons, to provide surgical care without the openness that's been in the past, and I want to talk a little bit about that in just a few minutes. So as you know, when we arrived here at the, at the hospital, we had no electronic medical record. We, we implemented that about a year and a half ago, two years ago. That immediately allowed us to apply for and receive HIMSS Level 7 certification. We were the second hospital in the state of Florida to achieve that ranking, and only 1.8% of all hospitals in the country have achieved that status. So a lot of hard work through, by our staff to make that happen. We are chest pain accredited. We were the second hospital in Pinellas County to receive it. Some of the bigger-name hospitals close to us here don't even have that recognition or have applied for it, or gone through the work to achieve that, that certification there. As I mentioned earlier, we are a STEMI-receiving hospital. Again, STEMI is heart attack patients. In 2013, the chamber graciously named us the 2013 Large Business of the Year nominee. Primary Stroke Center designation. The gentleman earlier tonight mentioned about the Consumer Report. We are a leapfrog group score of A, so that is, looks at our safety, is providing care to our patients. And so we were very, were very appreciative of that recognition, and that is certainly one of the highest ratings around in the area there. Improved financial results, I'm going to share how that's come about this past year. As I mentioned, the robotic surgery, if you haven't had a chance to come and look at that piece of equipment, it is technology unbelievable. We've got over 10 surgeons at our hospital that have that, that are certified and have received the credentialing and training to operate on patients, but it is truly a leap forward with taking care of patients. In the past, certain procedures that would require our female patients to stay at home for over six weeks, now they're able to get back to work in a week. And so it truly changes the dynamics of surgery. The 3D imaging, imaging that they can now see by looking at this equipment is just, just spectacular. So if any of you are interested, I'd be happy to personally let you put your hands on the equipment, and I can demonstrate what's going on there. You know, since we arrived, three years ago, we've invested over $46 million into the center. So as you know, we are not a, a for-profit corporation. That money does not come from shareholders. That money comes from sister hospitals who have foregone improvements to their facility so that this hospital in this community, community could benefit from it, so. In 2013, we sponsored over $75,000 in different commitments to the community here. You can see some of the entities that we've supported. You know, the music on the beach this past, last summer, and we've already started again this year, we were the sponsor for that. You can see all the different entities that we support here in the community. I met our football coach, I believe he's left, but certainly we're very active in and involved with the community, and we, we believe in partnering with members of the community and partnering with other community entities. In 2013, we hosted over 213 community health screenings. So we touched over 15,000 people. When I arrived three years ago in January of 2011, you know, none of this type of activity was taking place. So we now go out. The largest event we had last year was over at the Ennisbrook Resort, and we had over 1,100 people show up for that event. And so again, this is a picture of it, and you can see that it's very well-attended. Today, they had bingo at the hospital, and there was over 112 people that came from the community to participate in bingo, so, and that's for health reasons there. Community benefit. So in 2013, let me explain this chart to you, because it's very important. We provided benefits to the underprivileged. So this is not the difference between our charges, which we all know in healthcare is, is very, very high. This is what our cost is to provide care versus what we receive in reimbursement. So cost, reimbursement, that delta. So you can see for 2013, $8 million shortfall for the underprivileged in our community. Benefits to the elderly, another $12 million. Benefits for community health and wellness, about $176,000. You can see we sponsored or supported spiritual needs, faith-based needs here in the community, $77,000. This past year, we hosted the first breakfast prayer that was hosted here in Tarpon Springs. Did that along with the Shepherd Center. Was very proud to participate with them on that. And in addition, we invested another, almost $4 million in capital improvements to the hospital. And that is part of the $46 million I mentioned earlier. You know, quality, one of the areas that we've been working on very hard is to improve the quality of care that we provide at the hospital. So what you have here is these are measures that the government, the federal government, has identified for all hospitals in the country. And so there, there may be anywhere from eight to 20 different measures that you have to perform exactly perfectly. It could be time-related, it could be the type of drug that you, that you give to the patient, it can be a whole host of measures that you're required to give. You have to put stockings on a patient within certain timeframe from surgery. So you can see on acute MI, we've achieved a perfect score of 100% for 16 consecutive months. Heart failure, 14 months. Pneumonia, 17 months. Skip surgical care improvement process, two months. And you know, with some of our volumes, if we miss one patient, that drops us from being at or above the, what the government calls the 75th percentile, all the way down. So we dropped the ball. No harm came to that patient, but clearly we disappointed ourselves with that. Stroke, eight consecutive months. VTE, eight consecutive months. And immunizations, nine consecutive months. So while this, this may not seem like a lot here, let me tell you, this takes a lot of work of a lot of people to constantly be checking and rechecking, making sure that we're providing the right care at the right time for our patients. And I would hold up our quality measures against any hospital in the community in the area that we serve here. EBITDA, this is essentially our net profit. So you can see in 2010, you can see that we lost, was it about $6 million there? In 2011, certainly rebuilding the hospital and trying to, you know, get things going there, we lost almost $10 million, I'm sorry, $8 million. 2012, a little bit more than $2 million. And in 2013, we were able to turn the corner and we made a little bit of money. You know, in healthcare, everything's very expensive. An ICU bed is $25,000 per bed. So you can, you can see that it's, it is critical that even a nonprofit hospital who happens to be associated with the Florida Hospital system, that we even are, need to make a profit. The only way that we generate capital funds to reinvest back into the hospital is through our profits. As I said earlier, $46 million came from our sister hospitals, they had to forego that. And so it's now time for us to stand on our own, own two legs there and be successful here. And again, I would say, you know, 60% of this money is invested immediately back into the plant, any profits we make. Any other 25%, 40% there, you know, may come back to us in other forms, but it certainly, it does go to possibly other hospitals that need some assistance there. So you can see in 2014 that we've budgeted about a $3 million profit. And so most hospitals our size in markets, sister hospitals, they're making, you know, upwards of $10, $12, $15 million. So you can see, we're just starting to achieve some traction here and so we're looking forward to a very good year. Thus far in 2014, we have made budget for the first two months. I remember sharing that with our board a couple of months ago, you know, when we showed a profit. And I had several board members mention to me that it's probably been the first time in 15 years that a hospital has had a profit. So I remember Dr. Carson speaking to that, so. Very proud to be able to do that for the community. You know, as we look forward to the future, what are some of the areas of the hospital that we need to pay some attention to? As you know, other hospitals have either built full replacement hospitals or have invested in their plant. And so one of the areas that is of, that we need to really look at in the future is our ER services. The ER is the front door for the hospital. I looked at the stats yesterday, 75% of our admissions come through the emergency room. And so our ER unit is 13 beds, so. As I said earlier, we are the only, the area is only accredited chest pain center. We are a primary stroke center. You know, we do aggressively promote that we're a no-wait ER and what we're doing there is within five minutes, you will be triaged and be seen, be wheeled back into the back there and care will begin. And I'm going to show you something about our patient experience. We have a very, very good patient experience. We measure our patient experience both on the inpatient side and also on the outpatient side and we measure it in the emergency room. And so we are doing very well with our patient experience, our patient satisfaction. We've had good year-over-year growth. Last year, we saw about 7% increase over the prior year in the emergency room with visits. This year, we're tracking about 10% increase. All of our physicians in the emergency room are board-certified in emergency medicine, so we have a very skilled and very qualified emergency room physician group. Today, for a physician to apply to the hospital, they either have to be board-eligible or board-certified. Board-eligible means that they will be sitting for their board certification shortly. So that is something that the Medical Executive Committee of the hospital accepted that responsibility and so again, that demonstrates the commitment to quality care, quality providers at your hospital. We have a full complement of specialty services. We have very good patient flow metrics. I'll share those with you in just a few minutes. And I mentioned about the front door of our facility is through the emergency room. Our ER growth, you can see what some of our growth has been since 2010. 7% growth, 7% growth, 4% growth last year and you can see another 10% growth we're projecting this year. So as those numbers rise, those percentages, that means a lot more patients than what they did when we were much lower there. So you can see that, you know, in 2014, we're projecting 22,000 patients come through those Those of you who tried to park up on the ramp, you know, we have 11 dedicated spots there. Our emergent, our ambulance company, they, they have to back in there from the street. I see Mark shaking his head. They have to back in from the street there and sometimes it gets kind of interesting to watch them do it. I've seen as many, three ambulances trying to get in there at one time. You know, I do hear from our elderly patients that, and you know, some of the other patients, that they struggle getting out of our hospital. You come to that light there and trying to take a left there, it can be very busy, particularly in season. While it is a flashing light, I would love to see a activated red light happen there. So, Mark, maybe that's something you and I can talk about in the future there. I mentioned about the ambulance requiring a three-point turn there. You know, that emergency room was built in 1978. So with all the new technology, all the monitors, all the other changes in healthcare, it does challenge our ability to, you know, to provide efficient care there because of all the, the lack of space there. As I mentioned, we're nearing our capacity, which is, you know, those are good problems that I enjoy having. And those of you who've had patients or family members, friends in the emergency room, you know that privacy is something that's not always achievable because of the curtains there. So we make the best of it, but certainly I think we'd all prefer to have individual emergency or individual rooms there for our patients. Here's some pictures of the hospital. You can see, again, there's 11 spots there for people to park and we're constantly monitoring and, you know, chasing some of the people that aren't using emergency room services down in front of the hospital there. So you can see one of the ambulances parked right there. Additional picture there. This is our lobby, you know, we've dressed it up as much as we can there, but you can see that it's, we chose to take the picture when no patients were there, so it's to protect patients' privacy. So it's not empty, trust me. This is the areas here, you can see the bays that we have here with the curtains that separate them. We have a total of four rooms that provide, you know, individual rooms there for our patients and the rest of them, we do the best we can with patient privacy. This is overflow seating. There's times when we have so many patients there that we will ask our patients, not the visitors, to sit in these chairs here that you see. The back area of the, of the emergency room area, you can see how we've got the beds stored So I talked about our patient satisfaction, our customer service scores. The way that we measure is, there's, you know, 1 through 10, we ask for patients, a 9 or a 10 is always. Did you always, or did we always meet your needs? So even though we could get a lot of 7s and 8s, which means usually, we discard those. So when we just look at our always scores, in the emergency room, 85% of our patients in February said we always met their needs. Our patient throughput process, and we talked about that earlier, our door-to-provider, under 15 minutes there, decision to admit. So once a patient's brought to the back, our physicians are able to make that decision within 66 minutes. If they're going to admit that patient, put them up on the floor, or if that patient's going to be allowed to go home from a safety standpoint. Door-to-discharge, you know, if a patient requires a CT, CAT scan or with contrast, that alone takes 120 minutes, so overall, we're achieving our metric there of 122 minutes. And patients leaving without being seen by the doctor, we certainly, that's, that's the potential for a patient who's frustrated that we weren't able to get him in the back so quickly or for whatever reason he chooses to, to leave without seeing the doctor. So that in the month of February is about 0.6%, 6 tenths of 1%. So something that we constantly watch, we want to be able to provide care to everyone that walks through those doors and sometimes patients choose to leave. Here's our bullseye, this is how we, this is another way to show our customer service scores. So the top box there, bucket is likelihood to recommend. You see the, the blue scores is 2013 scores for November through January. The circle there, white circle, is for November through January 2014. So you can see where we were last year. The rings represent percentile. So we have the, the first percentile, the 25th percentile, 50th, 75th. And where I want to be is up there in the center of that bullseye, which pushes us into the 95th percentile. So that measures us against all other emergency rooms throughout the country, according to press gain. So you can see for likelihood to recommend that we're, what, above the 75th percentile? You can see informed about delays, patients obviously like to know why they're being delayed and so we're doing a good job of communicating with them. Their overall rating of the emergency room care, you can see that's right there inside that 75th percentile ranking. Nurses, again, an area that we need to work on, it's below the 75th percentile. You could see that doctors, you know, the patient's perception of the quality of care from the doctors, you can see that's almost in that bullseye. Arrival, those questions there, almost in that bullseye. Test treatment, again, almost in that bullseye. So you can see how the rest of those measures are really demonstrating to you how our patients, you know, citizens of this community and the people that we see are, feel about the emergency room. And so again, this is something that we track every, we track every day and every month. And I will tell you that this hospital is leading our company in these, in these metrics, so. We have other hospitals come to determine how we're making this happen here, so. So planning for the future, you know, at some point, we're going to have to expand and replace our current ER. You know, I, I meet quarterly with the ambulance companies and they, they share with us their views of our ability there. I have no idea what the project could cost, it'd probably be about 15 to 20 million dollar replacement facility there. Probably would have to be located over on the, the road there, curlew, to make it work right. Possibly we might be able to expand into the garden area, the, that's on the backside of the emergency room there. But, you know, this, that would certainly expand the access for the community and enhance the patient experience. This, this is some of their area and sister emergency rooms. You can see this is one of our emergency rooms and how they've, what they have to offer their communities. You know, this is certainly geared toward the children that come in through the emergency rooms. We don't have the, we can't, we don't have the ability to provide a dedicated area just for that. This is a CT that's right in the emergency room. Our CT, we have to push a patient probably a couple hundred yards to get to the CT unit, but you can see how one hospital has chosen to put a CT right in their emergency room. This is a nurses station, again, for patient privacy and those areas that we're showing it empty there, but you can see what some other hospitals have with, as it relates to the care for their patients. And you can see those rooms on the backside there, those are all private rooms that they're able to treat patients in. So, you know, our future is very bright. I'm very proud of what this hospital's achieved. You know, it's, the success has been really very, very compelling and I hope you appreciate what's happened over the past three years. And a lot of people bet it against us, but I think we've proven them that we can make this place be successful. And so, you know, at the end of the day, a lot of hospitals have very similar equipment, but it's the quality of care and it's patient satisfaction, that's how you grow your business. And so we have been focused on that and will continue to be focused on that and we never want to, we never want to be second place as it relates to quality of care. So I commit to you that we will always deliver that care. Whole person care, we want to invest in the community. Certainly, you know, I know there's a lot of hospitals in a lot of communities that would love to have a hospital in their community, pardon me, there's a lot of communities, a lot of cities that would love to have a hospital in their community. So the citizens of this community and the patients that we serve should feel very fortunate that, you know, over the years that you guys have committed to keeping the hospital open and, and I tell you, I'm a long-term employee of Florida Hospital and I believe it's the finest company in the world to work for. And I can tell you that our, our value system is, is in the right place, quality of care and patient satisfaction. If that happens, finances will take care of themselves, so. I just wanted to thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, first, I just want to thank you, Mr. Burgum, for your vision and leadership at the hospital and for Mr. Kuskoudis and the board, for all that you have been doing over the last few years and we're glad to see you in the black and we know that the hospital is continuing to be a better-known commodity, I think, that, you know, there's a lot of good things that other people outside of this community are finding out about our own hospital and I think it's due to not only the staff there, but the board and its vision and trying to make Florida Hospital of North Pinellas the number-one hospital in this area and in this region. So I just want to thank you for this report. We're looking for some great things in the future as far as the next reports, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, Commissioner Lawson?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I really just wanted also to thank you for being here and congratulate you on the very impressive transformation that's taking place at the hospital. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Right, Mayor?
Thank you. And I want to thank you for, Bruce, for this presentation this evening and I hope, and I hope, you know, every quarter or so that you can come back with a presentation and show us more, more and more improvements for this hospital because you really took on a big feat taking on, you know, the hospital that we had, not that it was bad or anything, it just had a bad reputation. And you have really brought it along and I want to thank you for that. We're very lucky to have a hospital right in our community, very lucky for that. And I hope you can fill the beds. I want, I want to hear one day that you're full, because, you know, we hear that at other hospitals.
I'll dance in the street for you if I can report that.
I know that's a long-term goal, it's a, it's a goal for you, so hopefully we can achieve that or you can achieve that. And, and I do want to, and I hope that you can get another, you know, more updated ER. I've been in that, last year in that ER quite a number of times with my dad and it was full. It was, you had a great, even during, you know, I was always got the call during the middle of the night. So there I was. You guys had, I always had a good crowd in there. But the service was phenomenal. And I have to tell everybody, the service in the ER and then as well as in the hospital itself was phenomenal. And the staff loved their jobs. I'd get more compliments since the Adventists have taken over on their jo, you know, they just love working for the group. And that's good to know. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how many employees that you have total at the hospital.
It's over 700.
700, okay. That's wonderful. And, you know, I'd say probably 95 or more percent are happy working there. So that's really, that's something to be proud of. And I want to thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tarpen?
Thank you. Mr. Burgum, as always, it's a pleasure to see you. You come this time bearing phenomenal news. I also want to thank you for coming and giving the presentation. Some of the numbers are just overwhelming to me. I can honestly say that the changes are noticeable. As a strong advocate of the hospital, as far as one of the major assets in the community, I'm pleased by you sticking to your word, number one. You came into the community about three years ago, and you said, "Listen, this is what we believe we need to do. Please help us do it. We're going to invest this money." And you've done it. And one of the things that was always strong for me, and one of the things that I always wanted to stress the importance of, is that the hospital and the facility is owned by the community. So without a doubt, somewhere within that $46 million that you've invested into the facility, that remains with the facility and within the community if Adventist Group was to leave tomorrow. So that's something that is dear to my heart, and I think it's very, very important for all of us to recognize. That said, you doing what you say you're going to do, and the Adventists doing what they say they're going to do. For me, for you to say, "Look, the new ER is going to be crucial for us to the future." And to say that 75% of, you know, our quote-unquote "business" comes through the ER, that's something to me that, as a commission and as a community, we need to stand strong behind you and beside you moving forward with that. So for me, speaking for myself, as, you know, one of five, you know, I'm willing to do whatever we can and commit to you whatever we can as a community to help you achieve that goal, and in essence, help the community achieve its goal, which is a long-term, strong hospital staying within the community.
Thank you, Commissioner.
His presentation's not over because I get to end it. And I know you all are probably tired of hearing from me, and I'm kind of disappointed the crowd left. But, because I think it's something they needed, they need to hear as well. What Bruce didn't tell you is when the ambulances are in, because we don't have the room, the emergency room's on bypass. So if there's an emergency and an ambulance is coming in to the emergency room, and they can't bring in the ambulance, they have to go to another facility. And Bruce, if you could share with this board, with this commissioner, how many times that has happened?
Last year, we went on diversion about 26 times. Most recently, we went on diversion this past Sunday for over an hour. And so at that point, people that were, and these are 911 calls. So when I say diversion, you know, people are certainly available to come and walk up to the hospital. So no patients are ever turned away, no matter what's going on at the hospital. So when I say diversion, this is when the ambulance company, Sunstar, chooses to place us on diversion or bypass, and they let us decompress. Those are words they use. And so it took about 26 times last year. And so, you know, we believe that, we hope that any patients that were picked up through a 911 call here in the community, was, were able, you know, they were able to make it to the hospital, to that other hospital, but that's always a risk.
And this message is not just, obviously, for the commission, but for those people who watch this, watch the commission on TV. Because as Bruce said, many of you, many of you don't know where the money came from. It comes from the little hospitals like Florida Hospital somewhere else, okay, that has excess money and gives it to us so we can meet our needs. It comes within the Florida hospital system, from its main campus to the little hospitals. So the excess revenues work their way to Tarpon Springs. And for that, I actually want to thank the Florida hospital system. I had the pleasure of going to a conference on mission. I was invited to go. And it was a conference where all the hospital COs and invited guests from all over the country, and they've had people, they had people from other parts of the world where they have their missions, come to learn about how Adventists deliver health care. And health care is a tenet of their faith, which means they eat, breathe, worship wellness. And that's why you see such a change in how they provide and how they deliver health care. And the reason I bring that up about the other hospitals contributing their excess revenue and how we've been blessed to have that opportunity to take advantage of that excess revenue, why is that important? It's important because a hospital's going to be faced with a challenge of expanding and improving the ER. And as a community, we cannot look to other hospitals. We need to look within ourselves, within our community, for those of you who are watching on television, to embrace this hospital, support this hospital, and help this hospital achieve the level that it needs to achieve to meet the health care demands that this community has. Because five to seven years ago, when UCH was running the hospital, they actually did a study. And Bruce doesn't know this, because they weren't, Adventists weren't around at the time, but they told us at then that we had outgrown our emergency room, back then. And with the added volumes, it just shows, goes to tell you how desperate we are to looking at an expansion for ER services. You know, they call it at the hospital, they call it the ED department. And I told Bruce, "You got to change it to ER, because ED, to me, means something else." But in any event, I'll leave you all with that. Thank you.
I just have one comment. I would be very remiss if I did not acknowledge our foundation board. And you guys probably all know who served on those boards. I mean, 100% people from the community. About seven months ago, six months ago, I mentioned about the robotics program. The community board stepped up, and they've donated close to $750,000 toward that piece of equipment. So clearly, you know, I'm very grateful that we have such a supportive community board and that, you know, that piece of equipment will save lives. It's not going to fix all that ills the hospital from a volume standpoint, but it makes us competitive from a technology standpoint that, you know, you do not have to be embarrassed for what you have sitting right down the road here. We are as technology advanced as any other hospital system around. And we've got the, we've got the certificates and the designations to show you that there. So thank you to the foundation board for their support, financial support.
And again, I want to thank Mark for giving us the opportunity, Mark. So again, Mark.
Are there any public comments in the side? Seeing done, we again thank Mr. Burgum, Mr. Kusilis for that report. And I'm not sure where we're headed as far as the ER is concerned, but know that this is a partnership that we all embrace, and we're looking for bigger and better things as far as the hospitals. Next item is our consent agenda. Item eight, minutes, February 8 and March 4, regular session. Attorney fees, trash, mats, day note, LLP invoice, number 44903. Zenzo Law invoice, 13434, Thomas Sizemore-Gonzalez in hearing. LLP invoice number 74330 and 74786. 10 is special events, 4th Annual Tarpon Springs Fine Arts Festival. Chamber Commerce, April 5, 6, 2014. Beast Sponge Docks Arts and Crafts Show, Merchants Association, April 12 through the 13, 2014. Award RFP number 14004-P-DM, Prefabricated Park Restroom Facility, Splice Park. 12 is authorized mayor to execute First Amendment interlocal agreement with Palos County for Tarpon Springs Section 103, Small Shoreline Protection Project. 13 is approved local business tax application, excuse me, 1392, Red Oak Drive. 14 is award bid number 140042-B-CM, furnish and install fuel, island canopy. 15 is authorized purchase of excavator and trailer through Florida Sheriff's Association contract number 13-11-0904. 16 is authorized mayor to sign deposit account resolution, Treasury Management Master Agreement and Delegation of Authority Document, SunTrust Bank. Any item anyone would like to pull or put information on?
Just number 10.
Number 10?
We can approve and then come back.
Okay. Any public comments on items eight through 16 excluding 10?
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Yes, on item 12, the first time that that was brought up, a couple meetings ago. I tried to go back and watch that video to see exactly how it was worded, but the video's missing. The meeting before and the meeting after are there, but that meeting is not there. So I couldn't get the exact wording. But there was some talk about whether or not you were going to pay those bills, right, to the federal government. Tarpon would pay $200,000 and then get $100,000 back from the county, which is what this interlocal agreement agrees to. But there was also, I believe, $100,000 extra thousand for cost overruns, something like this that Joey brought up. Was any of that money spent, that $100,000 extra thousand? Was there any cost overrun? And why isn't that included in this? And was there an audit done? It says here that it is mandatory to have an audit of this project, because I didn't see that in the backup. So it says, "In accordance with 32 CFR Section 3326, the non-federal sponsor is responsible for complying with the Single Audit Act Amendments of 1996." So it says the federal government may do its own audit, but it's definitely saying that we have to. And so were the commissioners given that in their backup, or does this audit exist? And was that extra $100,000 taken out of the fund and put somewhere else? Or was it just that last meeting they voted on the ability to draw on it if they needed it? Because I don't see anything about that extra money and where it went or didn't go. So I just think that that's important to keep our eye on. I mean, it's an extra $100,000 that wasn't part of the project. My understanding was that was for cost overruns. Where's the money? Where did it go? Was it spent? Was it not spent? And why is it not showing up here? And if there was an audit done, will the public be able to see that audit? Thank you.
Just that again, in this agreement with, we're talking about the agreement for the county right now, the 103. They've also got a contingency. We haven't got the final, final bill and audit to close out. This is just the agreement that, to pay half, which is right now 103 with the contingencies in. So there'll be, you know, there may be something coming back. But again, this is the agreement for the county to pick up our contract when the county has run out. So this is to continue that. And the next stage after that is everything to be finally closed out and set, and then you'll see that. But we definitely want the county, you to approve this tonight, so the county goes theirs to make sure they pay their portion of the estimated amount. And then if there's any other overruns with the final closeout of the project, then you'll get all that, the final settlement.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Tarpen?
Mr. Recourse, this is just for my own pedification. Assuming that we went ahead and approved, or the board approved, the additional, let's say there was a $100,000 contingency. Assuming we only use 25, or we only have to cough up 25 from that 100, the additional goes back into the fund in which it was funded?
Yep.
Thank you.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Commissioner Tarpen?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a, just a comment about the festival. I see here that obviously the boat ramp is going to be closed for the duration of the event, including setup time. I recall that last year, there was some, you know, complaints and some concern from some boaters about the boat ramp being closed. So I would just ask that whatever we do for notification, if we can just go a little bit above and beyond what we typically do to notify the public that that boat ramp will be closed. And, you know, maybe for people who maybe don't live in Tarpon or even do live in Tarpon and don't know where the additional ramps are, if we could just make that information available to them as well. So I don't know if we post something at the actual boat ramp?
Yes.
You know, in advance? If we do do that, maybe we could do that a little bit more in advance, you know.
And plus make the announcements out, get the press releases and announcements out.
Yeah, the press releases, and also, you know, make the alternatives known as well, where people can launch.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all.
That's it?
It was just mainly a comment, yeah.
Okay. Move approval?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarpen?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. We now move to special consent, item number 17, request to sell administrative fine lien, 1221 East Lime Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how much detail you all want on these, but this is a request to settle an administrative fine lien arising from a code enforcement case from 2010 for failure to connect to the city sewer system. The property ultimately went into foreclosure. At the time, the amount of the fine lien is just shy of $43,000 for failure to connect to the sewer system. And we have received a request to reduce that and settle that fine for a lesser amount. The amount offered by the record property owner, which is the mortgage holder, was $1,398.93. I'm recommending a settlement of $4,200 in 60 days, or that fine will revert to its original amount. And my recommendation is based on, you know, sort of the policy that it's better to have foreclosed properties sold and put in the hands of property owners who are going to take care of them and ideally avoid code enforcement issues in the future. That's my recommendation at this time. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about the application.
Any questions? Commissioner Tarpen?
Mr. Attorney, I see that the total administrative costs incurred by the city here are $26.65. And the amount that you're recommending to settle is 43 something?
Yeah, it's actually $4,200.
I'm sorry, $4,200?
Right. Because there's some costs to actually hook up the sewer, or hook up the, excuse me, the sewer system.
So the property currently has not been hooked up to the sewer?
Well, they did cure it, but I think they did it at our cost, so we included that within it.
Within the $4,200?
Correct.
Any additional questions? Showed entertaining motion?
Move for approval.
Of the?
Of the attorney's recommendation.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tarpen?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 18, request to sell administrative fine lien, 522 East Lime Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another similar situation here. We have code violations emanating first from 2004 and second from 2012. The accrued fines in total are about $59,000. We were offered $2,500 to settle the lien. I'm recommending $4,025 based on the administrative costs incurred, and the code enforcement costs incurred. You have a similar situation here. The property was obtained at a tax deed sale, and then it was conveyed one other time. As soon as it was conveyed, just like in the previous case, the violations were corrected. And again, on the idea that it's better to And again, on the idea that it's, it's better to have the properties back in and compliant and on the rules, I'd recommend a settlement in the amount of four thousand twenty-five dollars to be paid within sixty days. If not accepted or paid within that time, the fine will revert to its original amount and the lien, uh, would remain valid.
Uh, any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner...
Again, uh, Mr. Attorney, I apologize for my ignorance. Your, your request when we settled for forty, how much hundred?
Four thousand and twenty-five dollars.
Four thousand and twenty-five dollars, and the administrative costs are fifteen hundred and twenty-five?
That's correct.
And the difference is coming from?
Um, just my recommendation that we, we, um, though it certainly, you could take all of these and break them down to the administrative costs, and that'd be okay. You get your costs back, but we wanted to make sure, I wanted to be aware in this case that, uh, um, these code violations were, were around for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
And so, uh, to the extent that sends a message to potential violators in the future that that won't be tolerated, um, my recommendation was to have, have an additional fine at play, so you don't eliminate the whole thing.
And this is a bank-owned property?
Presently, yes.
Thank you.
Also, the twenty-five hundred was the amount offered, so they, they, I want you to understand the, the bank has consented to that as well. If that wasn't clear in my memo, I apologize. They offered twenty-five hundred plus the, plus the administrative costs.
Plus the additional.
So they fundamentally consented to that amount.
Thank you.
Move for approval?
Second.
Of the recommendation.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tarrpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Um, ordinance and resolution, item number nineteen, ordinance twenty-fourteen dash zero two, annual update to capital improvement schedule of the city's comprehensive plan, uh, second reading.
Ordinance twenty-fourteen zero two, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan as required by chapter one six, three point three one seven, seven Florida statutes, providing for other modifications that may arise from review of this ordinance at the public hearing and/or with other responsible parties, providing for severability and providing effective dates. Second reading, ordinance twenty-fourteen dash zero two, by title only. This ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on September nine, two thousand and thirteen, and March five, two thousand and fourteen.
Spencer?
Uh, there's nothing new to add since first reading and recommend that it's approved as presented. Thank you.
Any, uh, questions, additional questions from Ms. Spencer? Any public comments on this item? Showed entertaining motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tarrpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, the next item we have is item number twenty, application fourteen dash seventeen, request to negotiate development agreement with, uh, Bell Air Capital Group LLC for development of vacant land in the Bay Shore Heights subdivision.
Uh, thank you. This is application fourteen dash seventeen. This is a request to negotiate a development agreement with Bell Air Capital Group LLC for the potential development of vacant land in the Bay Shore Heights subdivision. Uh, this property is essentially the same group of properties that the board, um, looked at for rezoning, um, a few months ago, and this is a different group, uh, and they are, you know, recognizing the delicacies of this particular property, do want to, uh, attempt to negotiate a development agreement to address any concerns from the surrounding properties. And so this is just the first step. This is the request to negotiate. If you authorize this, then the city manager and staff will begin negotiations and go through the regular development agreement approval process, um, that's outlined in the staff report. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Spencer? Any public comments on this item?
Nita Protes, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. Again, uh, found out late today and got off the computer information that this was on the agenda. And, uh, we came up here a few months ago, when this came before you, that the residents of, uh, Bay Shore Drive are concerned. They wanted R one hundred to stick with the development of any development that was to be on this piece of property, because when we bought our properties years ago and people built their homes, it was stated that it would all be R one hundred, and we didn't want any smaller lots. Uh, we wanted it to keep it the same as what we have on Bay Shore. We're also concerned about the public right of ways coming out on Bay Shore with the development. And I think what bothers me the most when I saw this, the applicant anticipates rezoning the property as necessary to support the proposed single-family detached development and requesting to negotiate a development agreement to facilitate the process. Well, I don't want any facilitation. I want it to go the slow process so that we will be able to understand and see exactly what is happening. And I would like to know, maybe from the attorney, the way it's written here and the way they want to go, isn't this a little different than if they were just coming in for the first time wanting to develop that property? Just because it's been talked about before, shouldn't they have to go through the full process again?
Well, no, they have, they have the opportunity under your, under the code to submit a development application. There's nothing to stop them from doing that. Now, whether the commissioner ultimately decides to authorize a negotiation of that development agreement or authorize the development agreement itself once negotiated, uh, is, is of course another matter, but, uh, the submission of an application is something within the right of the applicant.
Well...
Without respect to this, it happened before.
A lot of people came, but they had to leave. And, uh, for myself, I'd like to see them go through the full process all over again so that we would have an opportunity to speak and understand and see what's going to happen, because this is going to affect us. I know I have a great concern about Lucille Drive there. Then a little further up, there's another right of way on a curve that we have a great concern about. And then further down the street, they wanted to bring out a road again, which would endanger children and properties coming out onto Bay Shore. So I'm asking the board to look at this, and they do have a right, they own the property, but we also have to protect ourselves too, to go through this process slow so we can have an understanding and we know what's happening. And we are requesting, uh, from all the phone calls today, they want to stay R one hundred. They don't want the small lots anymore, and we explained that a few months ago when we came up here to discuss this property. And, uh, I guarantee you, we're going to be on top of it, as you know we will, and we're going to be up here in full forces to protest and talk about it. And, uh, uh, I hope that you will take into consideration what we had asked for and our concerns and how we felt about that being developed. We know it's going to be developed one day. We can't stop development, but we need to stand on our right to be able to have, not to ruin our properties or downgrade what we have.
Paul Lewis, eight twenty, Bay Shore Drive, and I'll also just keep it brief. Uh, agree that individuals have the right to development, has to be a fair process, and, uh, also support keeping the zoning the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Spencer, do you want to speak to internet? What is the process?
Just briefly, this really is actually slowing down the process. This does allow the board to consider mitigating circumstances. It allows you to consider site plans and things like that, whereas before with the previous rezoning attempt, you had no guarantee. You were simply rezoning a piece of property. So, um, I think that's why the, you know, the developers requesting what they're requesting. Uh, they, they, it, it is a public process. You will get notice of all the hearings. Uh, the development agreement, just like the rezoning, you know, does have to go to the planning and zoning board, it has to come to the board and commissioner. So it's a very public process, and it does actually slow down the process. Having said all of that, if you absolutely just agree with the board, uh, with, you know, that you wanted R one hundred, then so be it. You know, I don't know that there's any, they don't need, they don't need a development agreement with R one hundred. They can come in tomorrow and do it, do, do a project. So I'll just leave that as it is.
Well, thank you. And we definitely want to know, uh, want everyone to know that this will be a public process, everyone could be involved, and that we can get out, hopefully with this slowed down process, good information, and so that when we meet, it's not a lot of bad information and people coming here with, um, some erroneous thoughts about what's happening with the process. So, um, if there's no other public comment, then showed entertaining motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tarrpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, that concludes our agenda, and, um, we'll start with, uh, old clerk.
Commissioner Tarrpani?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
No comment.
Uh, city manager?
Yeah, let me make two at this time and probably be the only time I speak about it until we get some things accomplished. First of all, on the golf course situation, I want to thank the police chief for what they had to do. If anybody's got any blames, concerns, or whatever, they can take them up with me because I'm the one who ordered the whole process, um, and it was the proper process. There was no overkill, there was no overreaction. When you get a complaint from a former employee that insinuates the possibility of criminal action, you have to do a full investigation, no matter what you think from the start, that it's probably an issue that's going to be administrative and dealt with during the administrative processes. Um, I cannot even begin that administrative process until all possibilities of a criminal investigation. As you read in the papers every day, no matter how much you know somebody or know people think you do, um, people commit bad actions. Did we have any thoughts that, um, our golf course manager had them? No, but we could not bring that out until a full investigation is done. And obviously, being through investigations on myself several times, um, it's hard to say that you welcome an investigation, but most of the time, if you're confident that you did nothing wrong, you don't worry about an investigation, because that's what it's going to show in the end. Unfortunately, no matter what the state attorney says, and it was proper, we did not go forward, we did not put anybody in hand, because we did not encourage them to do charges. We thought this situation was best handled administratively within the city. Um, but we had to have a thorough report, or else I guarantee you, we'd have been in the front page of the newspaper that we tried to cover something up. So they did what they had to do, I did what we had to do. Um, the situation came up, um, where it can now be turned over to me. Unfortunately, in the process, the golf course manager resigned on his own. Ms. Criswell and everybody else can say as much as possible, it was a forced resignation. It was not a forced resignation. He chose to leave. Um, a- and that's the truth of the matter. So obviously, that administration port of the investigation won't be done, but there were, there were problems. The problem did not arise to a criminal level, but there would have been some problems that I had to deal with administratively. So I know the police mostly have taken the bad route, but again, you got to remember, you had a newspaper reporter who didn't have any real information because a criminal investigation is closed. So we ran around and talked to a bunch of people, and they wrote that article, and, you know, we got columns everywhere, that we got police officers with binoculars watching golfers on the tee, exchanging five and ten dollars. We're investigating all the leagues, um, golf club members. I mean, it all spurred again from, and we've seen a lot of this lately and tonight, you know, absolute misinformation and people making up the news. In fact, when we released it, when the state attorney finally gave us the over, okay to release it and stuff, and Fox News, because this thing went all over, and Fox News heard the real story, they kind of shook that, that's what the story is? Yes, here is the story, because we can open up the file now, and they didn't want anything to do with it. So, um, you know, it was not the police or anybody else's fault, it was blown out of proportion, it was people trying to make news instead of reporting news. And unfortunately, it, it happened that way, and hopefully, we're going to be on course, we're going to continue, and, uh, we'll get a new manager, and we'll keep moving forward in that situation. The other situation briefly is, is our issue with the docks. Um, just one of the things I want to make out and make sure, because it seems in a lot of the misinformation that you hear, and there's tons of misinformation out there when you hear, you know, when you ask to see anything, you know, I, I asked today, has anybody, you know, I still haven't seen any information and stuff, but one of the things they understand that this was not a city manager or a city staff project. The amphitheater, the dock along there, um, this was developed by citizens and probably one of the most involved process of bringing citizens together to put together a project, meetings after meetings after meetings. And if you see the people who attended, and you look at people tonight, you'll see people intend those meetings and then happen. But whatever way it happened and stuff, it was designed, this commission set it up to be designed by the people who came. Once it was designed and once it was approved, and again, remember, it was stopped one time and changed, um, then it's my jobs and staff jobs to carry out what is going on. But, you know, the amphitheater, which everybody calls it an amphitheater, I don't call it, I call it an agora, a meeting place, but whatever you call it, that wasn't my idea. Um, most of the ideas in there wasn't our ideas, but we carried that out and carried that through. I've been waiting since we had the last series of meetings, and we have had people, I mean, we, we have had people come in. We've had people come and concerned about the transient docks of the bathrooms, we got engineers, and we changed that project. We've had people concerned about the project, and we've changed the plan. So there's been people since December who's followed the proper route, came in and saw us, met with us. We kept that board out there for four to six weeks, and we made their changes. Unfortunately, there's a group of people who didn't come in, and again, now all this new information about affecting the dredging and stuff, which I still haven't seen one word of writing what they're talking about, again, nobody's come in. So again, as the offer, we got a long way to go. It's out to bid, but we got a long way to go before the bids come in and we even have the bidding process to bring back. We haven't even seen the costs yet. So, you know, costs may solve some things and be prohibitive, but that's a long way to go. So we are again offering, um, we'll have the displays ready. Um, I want it from now forward to go through me, not Mr. Hoffman, I want them to go to me. Anybody with their concerns can come in again, discuss it with me, and while we've got, you know, four to six weeks, I'd be glad to look at everything, um, see if there's some changes that could be able to accommodate or bring you back a recommendation that maybe we need to scrap this day. So, but I need the people to come to give you that report. As we see from emails, some people don't realize my role, but my role from you is to get that information for you, and I can't get that information for you if they don't come see me. Um, the ones who've come see me, and I can give you their name, you know, we've accommodated them, we've worked with them, those who choose not to. And we got a whole new group, because all this new information is stirring out there. So there's people who haven't been involved, but they're scared about stopping dredging the river and all this stuff. Again, I haven't seen one sentence to justify it. So again, from now until that time, we've got plenty of time before this is going to come up again. Um, we'll open up, and they can call directly through me, and we will meet and look again, and that'll help me get more information to get back from you, um, some ideas of what we may need to do with this project. So I'll offer that up, and we'll put it out there. I'll reach out to, obviously, some people aren't going to come in to meet with me, but there's others in that audience who will. So I'll reach out to them and try to get them in and work with them in the meantime, so we can try to get to somewhere in the middle where we can, we can all agree on and have this contentiousness, uh, quelled down. So that's what I commit to you, and I'll be ready to meet with those people.
State attorney?
No, no comments.
Uh, Commissioner, uh...
No comments.
Chief?
No comments, mayor.
And, you know, I, I just say, and just say briefly is that, you know, the, the reason that I talked about the, uh, the architect was to let people know that, you know, we have one of the final architects around, somebody that has, uh, roots in the community, that understands things from a historical perspective, whose family has been so much involved in trying to maintain the history of this community, and it, it's so much misinformation that's going around. That's, that's the problem, is that, you know, it's a continuous process of how do I stir people up with misinformation? Um, and this is a process been going on, I, I'd say for too long. Uh, and I've said before, and I know that we've spent a lot of money and the rest of that for this, but, you know, it gets down to a point of, hey, let's do something else. I mean, it's, it's not appreciated, you know, it's like, hey, somebody's trying to force something on somebody, and, and it really is, it's, it's disturbing. disturbing. And, uh, it's the reason that I talked about some things, and I would hope that some people would want to come and sit down and talk with you, try to get some good information about what's going on. Heard that, you know, the streets are going to be blocked off tonight, and nobody could drive through there. I mean, it's that type of erroneous information that keeps people hyped up in terms of somebody's trying to force, I don't know, one point five to me, who knows how many million dollars down someone's throat to wreck the sponge docks, you know? But also, I too say that, you know, it's, um, was with sadness to hear about the passing of, uh, of our former city manager, Ms. Spasivac, who I believe, you know, started us on a good path of doing a lot of things that are now somewhat entrenched in terms of financial stability, those type of things, the water plant, other, that she was involved in and her death. But also, ironically, is to congratulate the Banther family for their birth. Um, and, um, we wish, uh, them well, and we know their commissioner Banther would have some sleepless nights and move forward. But, uh, that was some very good information that, uh, that came forward. So, with that, we'll look at a adjournment this meeting at nine twenty-two.